Good evening. Man, it's good to see a full house today. I think we're gonna move the awards to the end of the program so we have a captive award. It's good to see everyone. A great day for the county. Thank you for coming to our regular meeting. We have two meetings a month. This is the first Tuesday meeting. We also meet the third Thursday at 5:00. So you're welcome to participate in those or watch us as we are live streamed. So we're glad to have you. Good to see so many familiar faces. And we always like it, Grandma says, when company comes. So it's good to have company in the house today. Mr. Brown has our meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's good to know that. Now, I don't see Pastor Hayes, anyone from the ministerial alliance here to do the invocation for us before I default to our, not default, I'm gonna yield to Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Joe Mosley. Will you please stand for the invocation and the pledge, please? Let us pray.
Father God, we are so grateful for your bountiful blessings that you bestow upon us on a daily basis. We thank you for the rain as well as the sunshine. And Father God, we pause and ask that you would come and be with this deliberative body as they discuss business of this community. We pray to Father, that harmony would prevail. We pray for all the recipients tonight, that they would, Father God, that this will motivate them to keep on moving forward and keep on doing great things. This we thank you for in the precious, pointed, and powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my brother Ricky out there, he could've handled a prayer for me.
He could've done it for us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I got it next time. I got it next time.
All right, Ricky. Ricky, you on notice now.
We happen to...
All right.
So you running him away.
Oh, okay.
We happen to have in our audit several award recipients on various levels. First level is sports. If you keep up with Liberty County sports, when I say that, I mean countywide. That means whether it's LCRD, whether it's the Liberty County School System, or whether it's first prep. We have several champions of recent. Of course, we have becoming a community of champions, Sheriff. We're a community of champions. So we want to promote and recognize those persons who have done well in our community. We can't do them all, but we can do those who are the state champs, at least. We celebrate and congratulate every participant at our workshop this past week on recreation. And they said that every county should make recreation a priority. So we want to certainly make sure it's a priority in Liberty County. So we appreciate you for participating. Appreciate your parents for supporting your children at LCRD. And, you know, teaches a lot of things, teamwork, taking instructions, discipline, all those things are very important. That will be great assets to your child as your child matures in life. So we're proud of the day to set aside this time to make some recognition when it comes to sports. We also have some opera grants. We have some people who have applied for some assistance from the county through special funds that have been given us, and we want to make those awards today, too. So commissions, we're gonna go down and do the sports first, then we're gonna stay down for the opera grants. Let's go down now and greet our guests. And Mr. Brown's gonna help us out with that.
Yes, sir. The Assistant Director of Recreation, Mr. Ricky Geyer, is gonna join us, and he'll actually call those people forward.
We had five kids, and we won six state championships in the track and field. We got a lot of kids that's out of town. We got one kid, he won two, but he's playing baseball tonight. We getting ready for All-Star Baseball. But we have one winner, 12-year-old, John Richardson. He won the 1600. We have his brother right here. He didn't win first, but he did get some medals and ribbons at the state. Stand up, Brian. We proud of him. A lot of these kids, they're out of town on vacation. They're playing baseball or softball tonight for practice games. Go ahead, I'll tell. 1600. 1600. Level 12 boy. Level 12 boy. I didn't get the rest of them, did I?
Ready? One, two, three.
You got 10-year-old girl, Todd Jackson, she won the shot hook. State shot hook. Every girl there, she won the softball. 12-year-old boy, he won the high jump and the standing long jump.
Thank you, sir. You would give those to the...
Yes, I would. Won the baseball.
All right. Now, careful side of this process, I know some of you will be gathering, so I guess next time, as soon as they, as they win their, let's get them to come to our meeting so we can...
Win their softball and baseball, we'll be back soon.
Ms. Chairman, the next group is a school that kind of is a repeat offender to the state championship in the soccer realm. This time, I'll call legendary Coach Tom Sucker in Tana to come up here and call out those names.
Go, Tom. Go, Tom. I can coach, I can cook, but this is not my... I don't know. I'm honored for the county I'm living in. My son born here, and my wife's here. I married a local lady for 33 years. I've been blessed. And matter of fact, my son is doing well, and I'm so proud of Liberty County. Mr. Schuman is just like a dad to me. And my son left with Schuman in two days, so I still would be here, having a daughter. Everybody look around and go, what Coach Tom doing, weed eating? But I'm honored, and we won the state this second year, back to back, and hopefully that I can bring the third one next year, our 16-year-old. Next year, so I've been blessed, and like I said again, God's been good to me, and I am never will be so proud of Liberty County. And all my life here, I've been here 45 years, so I love it here. So I would like to call the name of most of my players in the church camp right now. So I'm so sorry. I got six of them in Keglitz, Campbell. So I have Connor Podolski.
All right. Ready? One, two, three.
Is it the bottom? Who said that? Are you starting back over at the top?
Joey was a baseball man. He didn't work much in the softball.
All right. Ready? One, two, three.
And the next one will be Carrie-Anne White.
Is it the bottom? Who said that? Are you starting back over at the top?
Joey was a baseball man. He didn't work much in the softball.
Yeah, I don't know. Congratulations. So the next one will be Landon Aces.
So the next one will be Landon Aces. Thank you so much. Thank you for... It'll be a three-peat next time.
Ms. Chairman, as you mentioned, the county was applied for and was recipient of an American Rescue Plan Act grant that were some subsidiary funds from the federal government to help small businesses and nonprofits during the economic downturn from COVID-19. So these were the successful businesses and nonprofits that qualified for some of those funds. The first one we'd like to recognize if they're here is Fran's Home Daycare.
Actually, we've got, we have a photo shoot and a real thing, so you can carry the real thing with you tonight, too. The second one is Little Angels Childcare. Are they here?
Ready? There you go.
The next one is Megan Family Daycare.
Where do they work?
I want you to really smile.
One, two, three.
The next one is Salon Eloquence.
The next one is VIP Promotional Products.
The next one is Voice for Vets.
Yeah, we're... I don't know, is anybody here from Tri-County Protective Agency? You are.
The next one is V.I.P Promotional Products.
The next one is Voice for Vets. These are the nonprofit organizations. I don't know, is anybody here from Tri-County Protective Agency? You are.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
The next one is Council Area Art Council.
While she's there, Liberty County CVB.
I think the last thing I'd like to say on behalf of the committee that looked at these and the commissioners approved is that these are the businesses and nonprofits that endured. They made it through the storm, they weathered the loss, and they continue to function for the community. So they're to be congratulated.
Make a line if you're gonna do a picture as best we can. Y'all just send them to the commissioner.
Same thing for my soccer player.
One, two, three. Smile.
I can get y'all to come outside.
Don't hide, Commissioner. Don't hide. All right. On the count of, since they won two championships, on the count of two, one, two, three, uh, two. One, two, smile. Gotcha. Mr. Stevens, look at me. All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I got a lot of pictures to download.
I got it in the car.
Oh, no, Ricky's by hand, and I don't know where I put it.
All righty. The minutes from month of May, May 3rd, May 10th, and May 19th would require our approval. We've had time to review those.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. We accept the minutes from the month of May, specifically May 3rd, 10th, and 19th. Any further discussion? If there be none, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. The minutes are approved. Public hearing.
Chairman, will you entertain a vote for a public hearing?
I will, sir. Ms. Kim, you ready?
Motion would go into public hearing.
Second. That's our budget. In further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hands, please. All right. Those of you in the audience, if you're not a part of the county staff who've been working on the budget, oh my gosh. Lot of work's been done.
Few months.
Lot of work's been done. And this is a first budget presentation to the public. And from this point on, it'll be available in the office here in case someone wants to peruse it further.
It's also online.
It's also online.
It is under, on our website, under Finance. The proposed budget's there, too, so that you can look at it at home.
Okay. The process has been pretty much, you know, we hear from our department heads, and they bring their, I don't want to call it, list of necessities. And we weed through those because, you know, we only, you know, we only have so much income, so funds aren't where we can afford everything that's asked for. So we go through those things and try to prioritize as much as we can. Some things that we will give tentative approval to, some things are delayed, and some things, of course, based on the digest when the digest comes out. So it's a little bit of a convoluted process, but it's worked for us in the past, and it'll work for us again. But I just want you to know that a lot of red ink has been on some of these requests, not because we don't want to answer the requests of the county departments, but because we know on our side what limited funds that we have. So we have to make sure that we have a balanced budget. So here's our first presentation to the public and what it looks like from this angle.
Yes, sir. So I've summarized as best I can in about 13 different slides for you to see the budget request and the changes from our current year to what we're proposing for next year. So the original request came in at 58.5 million, and we made about $10.4 million worth of cuts to those requests. And we have a proposed fiscal year 2023 general fund budget, $48,125,227. And I'll share with you what some of that entails. So just for a comparative view, our current budget that we're in right now, fiscal year 2022, is 42.5 million. We're gonna go up to 48.1 million, an increase of about 5.59 million, the 13% increase, pretty significant. But here's a summary of our revenues, and we've broken them down by category object code as the Uniform Chart of Accounts classifies them. And you can kind of see some ups and downs. For the most part, your general property tax, which is all of your ad valorem taxes, is the largest revenue line item, and that's proposed to go up about 10%. Of course, we don't know what the digest will do, but that's what your budget requires at this time. Just to give you a pictorial of that, to try and emphasize the significance of ad valorem taxes, and that covers everything, your property tax, your personal property tax, your motor vehicle tax, your TAVT, your intangible recordings, your real estate tax, all of those that the mileage rate touches are considered your general property taxes. They make up about 60% of your total revenues. This year, charges for services jumped up to number two. In the past, it's always been sales and use tax, but because we added the EMS operations for those ambulance fees, now your charges for services kind of exceeded that. But you can see your four largest ones are property tax, charges for service, sales and use tax, which is your local option sales tax, and your fines and forfeitures. To put those four together, you can kind of see what they've done over the past 10 years. And here is your ad valorem taxes. You can see how they've grown. This is your local option sales tax in the blue, and you can see that's growing. Your charges for service is the orange or yellow, and then your fines and forfeitures, you can see what those have done over the past several years. Yep. Your expenditures, of course, salaries and benefits are always going to be your largest expenditures. Your human capital is your most valuable asset, your working asset, so you would expect that. This year, it's about an 18.6% increase in salary and wages, and that's a combination of several things. This is the first year, 2023 will be the first full year of budgeting for the EMS operations, which has more than 50 employees. This is also the first year that you're going to have the full force of what we've stood up for the countywide fire. In the past two years, we've brought on 18 people or 18 individuals, but we've staggered them. This past year, we brought on 18 more, and we've staggered them. So this will be the year where you have all 36 employees budgeted for a whole year. And then you've also got in there, you've got proposed merit for half a year, you've got a COLA, your longevity, and then we also have some new...
as the Uniform Chart of Accounts classifies them. And you can kind of see, um, some ups and downs. For the most part, your, your general property tax, which is all of your ad valorem taxes, is the largest revenue line item. And that's proposed to go up about 10%. Of course, we don't know what the digest will do, but that's what your budget requires at this time. Just to give you a pictorial of that, to try and emphasize the significance of ad valorem taxes, and that, that covers everything, your property tax, your personal property tax, your motor vehicle tax, your TAVT, your intangible recordings, your real estate tax, all of those that the millage rate touches are considered your general property taxes. They make up about 60% of your total revenues. This year, charges for services jumped up to number two. In the past, it's always been, um, sales and use tax. But because we added the EMS operations for those ambulance fees, now your charges for services kind of exceeded that. But you can see your four largest ones are property tax, charges for service, sales and use tax, which is your local option sales tax, and your fines and forfeitures. To put those four together, you can kind of see what they've done over the past 10 years. Um, and here is your ad valorem taxes. You can see how they've grown. This is your local option sales tax, uh, in the blue. And you can see that's growing. Your charges for service is the orange or yellow. And then your fines and forfeitures, you can see what those have done over the past several years. Is that it? Yep. Your, your expenditures, uh, of course salaries and benefits are always going to be your largest expenditures. Your human capital is your most valuable asset, your working asset. So you would expect that. This year, it's about an 18.6% increase in salary and wages. And that's a combination of several things. This is the first year, 2023 will be the first full year of budgeting for the EMS operations, which has more than 50 employees. This is also the first year that you're going to have the full force of what we've stood up for the countywide fire. In the past two years, we've brought on 18 people, or 18 individuals, but we've staggered them. This past year, we brought on 18 more and we staggered them. So this will be the year where you have all 36 employees budgeted for a whole year. And then you've also got, uh, in there, you've got proposed, uh, merit for half a year. You've got a COLA, your longevity, and then we also have some new personnel requests, which, uh, we'll identify for you in a minute. But collectively, you'll see, it's a 13% increase. If you take that same budget and you break it down by function, public safety makes up about 50% of our general fund budget. That's pretty significant. General government is about 24%, actually 21%. Last year, it was about 24. And you can see, I gave you prior years so that you could see how they've grown. Public safety did make up 44%, now it makes up 50%. So when public safety eats up more of that budget, the other departments or the other classifications shrink. But it's important to know that public safety is the largest area of your budget. So citizens should actually feel pretty good about that.
As fire, um...
As fire, EMS, law enforcement, emergency management, coroner. So yeah, those are your heavy hitter. And when I say law enforcement, that includes, of course, the jail as well.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Take that same ball of wax and you cut it another way. You can look at your mandated services versus your essential services versus your discretionary services. And you'll see that mandated services are about 54% of your budget. This is the services that you are required by law to provide, all of your courts. I'll show you what those are in just a minute. And your essential services, which has grown. This has grown because of adding EMS, because of adding a full-time fire operation. There's like a delay in this. Okay, oh, you're doing it. Okay. So these are some of your mandated services, of course, that you're required by law, um, to provide for, for the taxpayers. Then your essential services, you'll see here, fire and EMS are not mandated services, but this county made a commitment some years ago. Colly, I can't remember now how even long ago it was when we started the first little fire station in Gum Branch. And then you made a commitment over the next several years to providing countywide fire services. And now we're, we've grown to the point where we're about to embark on an even larger fire station. Of course, the EMS operation, we took over from the hospital this year. It's a pretty significant operation in and of itself. But it's interesting to know that those are not mandated, but certainly citizens would, would come to, um, expect those type of services. And then, of course, your discretionary, which is very little. Senior Citizen Chamber Commerce Youth Program, your School Resource Officer. And some might even argue that that's not discretionary, that that's essential. So those are, um, difference of opinions, I guess, as to what's essential and what's discretionary. So in this budget, um, your proposed additional personnel and benefits. There's about 134,000 for, um, the general government area. And you can see as we go on down the line, again, your public safety is about 889,000, um, for personnel. Uh, new personnel requests. COLA, merit, and longevity is almost 1.5 million. Total new salary and benefits, almost 2.6 million dollars. And then your capital items, um, not very much, 612,000. I think this is where you really hit it, when you took the red in, the red pen to things. And I will also tell you that these items are all, um, proposed to be covered by fund balance. So in your budget, when you go and you look at other financing uses, when you see a negative amount, that means there's some fund balance in there being used. So that's that very last category. Can't go back, so... Go back one more. And again. And one more. So you see down there, under other financing uses, that amount right there is the net effect of, um, some operational transfers and then use of fund balance. So together, it nets to a negative 854. You're actually identifying to use about 1.6 million dollars of fund balance. A million dollars for the one-time payment to shore up any potential shortfall in the pension. If we get that again, we've had it for the last three years, we've budgeted a million. But if we do get that from the actuarial report, that will be covered by the use of fund balance, as it was this year. Go forward. Okay. Issues to consider, uh, we will continue to fulfill our obligation for countywide fire services as we continue to build the new fire station, um, complete the transition of EMS operations to the county. For the most part, we are mostly done. There's still some licensing things that have to be done, but, um, we've been running it. It's been, been going well. We'll continue to monitor the general fund revenues. And we'll consider the use of, of the American Rescue Plans. And you've been provided with a detailed list of some of those capital items that we believe the ARPA funds will cover. We've also shifted some of those capital requests to Sales Tax 6 and Sales Tax 7, and also any savings that we might have in this year's budget. So those are broken down for you in detail that you have. Consider the digest growth, real versus assessed. Everybody's gotten their assessment notices?
Yes.
All righty then. Nobody likes to talk about taxes. Keeping that reassessed growth is one way that you're able to fund a continuing, growing operation as we have. We continue to grow, the services continue to increase, um, the cost of those services continue to increase. So when you get the digest, you're going to have to make the decision, um, what you're going to do with the millage rate. If you're going to keep the reassessed growth, if you, if that's even going to be enough to cover what you've budgeted. That is one disadvantage we have with our fiscal year, is that we don't get to see the digest before we adopt our budget. And that's why, when you adopt your budget, you preface it by saying, "This is based on the best estimates that we have." And once we get the digest, if revisions need to be made, we'll do it at that time. So you'll be able to take into consideration what you want your budget to do versus what the millage rate needs to be. And we'll go into those discussions like we have for years. And again, further revisions might be needed. You're going to continue to adhere to the budget policy. We'll continue to monitor that for you and bring those monthly reports to you to let you know where departments are. We always pursue cost reduction initiatives. We, we don't... Mr. Brown's departments don't pay overtime. We eliminate travel unless it's absolutely needed. And we adhere to the fund balance policy, which has really saved y'all because you have a very good, strong fund balance. And your fund balance says that you'll maintain three to seven months' worth of operational reserves in your undesignated and unreserved fund balance. So that has actually allowed you to cover some of these one-time purchases, whether it's a ambulance, or whether it's a contribution to shore up the pension plan. You're able to use that once it's, gets over that seven months. And even sometimes when it's in between that three to seven months. And that's all I have right now. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to try and answer them for you.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions. First off, on the... On the summary of expenses. Did you, you said there was 18 new hires in that number?
No, I said there was 18%. It was 18, uh, 18% increase in salary and wages.
Right.
But, so, the last two years, you've had 18 hires, new hires, in fire. But they've been staggered. So they haven't all been budgeted for a full year. So two years ago, you brought on 18, but you brought on, you brought on six in the first, I think, four or five months. Then you brought on another six, like after six months, and then you brought on the final six. And then the next year, you did the same thing. Well, this is the first year where all 36 individuals will be budgeted for a full year. So that's part of that impact. That's, that's part of that 3.8 million dollar change.
For 36 just in fire?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And, um, on that same page there, you said that other financing. So are we already using fund balance now, the one point in '22? It's already, we're using over a million?
You budgeted to use fund balance if you need. When we close the year, we'll figure out whether or not we actually had to. When we get, when we capture all of the revenues and identify all of the expenses, then we'll find out if we actually used as much fund balance as you budgeted, or not at all.
Okay. All right. But for next year, you've plugged into 854, but...
Well, the 854 is a net number. So...
Is it what?
Is a net number.
Oh, okay.
So there's about 1.6 million dollars in fund balance, but then you've also, and, and that's a negative. And then you've also got an operating transfer for 911 that's a positive 600,000. And then you've got another, I think, 200,000 dollars for Rite Army Airfield.
Okay. The, one more question. The other one is, we just talked about the, um, the reassessments, or that the taxes going out, the estimate? On your taxes for this year coming? And what is going to happen if we have a lot of people challenge those values? Which it looks like on some of them, they went up 10 to 18% on a value of a piece of property in Liberty County, on just some of the ones I've seen.
So what happens is...
If we have a challenge out there...
Right. There, you would have to be...
Because you have so many days.
Below, yeah, you have 45 days to appeal your assessment.
Yeah, that's right.
And then, uh, once that period is over, the assessor's office will determine the number of appeals. And they'll try their best to whittle that down to less than 3% so that there's not a holdup on the digest moving forward. I think it's a 3% number.
That's going to be dependent on the Board of Equalization?
Well, it depends on if the Board of Assessors can whittle it down first. Because the Board of Assessors will be the first...
Right.
And if they can, great. If they can't, then they go to Board of Equalization.
They try to first.
I, I just, Commissioner Thrift, I, I'm looking at this, uh, fund balance. I had no idea that we was going to come in for 2022 at a million. I mean, I thought we was going to be looking at more like the 854 in 2022 and, and stay somewhere between 5 and 750,000. I mean, I, um...
And that's just a budget number, that's not actual.
I understand that, but I also know that when we started the budget process, we were in April. And we were looking at $3 a gallon of fuel. And now we're at $5 a gallon of fuel. And all of that backs up onto our EMS, our folks that's driving, even the cost to produce energy in the state. I mean, there's not that many fossil, uh, you know, oil plants anymore, but I mean, it's still going to be passed on. I just, uh, I, I hope we can, we need to try to make sure that we, you know, before, before the time comes, somebody comes up here asking, then I need to be letting you know, and you let us know, that this is what, what's out there. But, but, uh, instead of let's trying to prove it before it comes up here, Mr. Brown and, and Kim. Now, I know the chairman's going to work diligently with everybody up here. It's going to be a tough battle to fight. Not saying people would take advantage, but I'm just, I'm, I looked at people standing in here tonight getting checks that didn't make it, you know, last year. So we, um, we need to make sure that we keeping that number a little bit further down. I mean, $5 a gallon for fuels, the highest it's ever been. So let's make sure that we're, um, I mean, you know, you, the constitutional, there's a few constitutional officers. I see the sheriff and the coroner and I don't know if, uh, fire chief's constitutional officer yet or not. But I'm just saying that I know y'all understand what we're talking about here. We're going to be in a serious situation if we go to, uh, that, that price range. I mean, I don't want it to be to where we can't respond, you know, whichever way. And then again, I don't want us to be where we're in such a jam. I mean, this money was kind of set aside a lot of times for, even if we have any type of disaster type stuff. I know we've got insurance, but we've always wanted to be able to be the first ones to pull the trigger on getting folks in here to get our roads cleaned out. And the, the cash money is what brings that. So just, uh, continue on. I, I really thought that number would have been lower. Of course, now, I'm not a mathematician, but what I was figuring, that we would have been, we'd have been a whole lot further down on the 854, so... Let's just work hard and before something's asked for, you two, as far as I'm concerned, and then the chairman, of course, will be involved in it. But, um, I want everybody to understand, it's going to be a tough, tough time.
Well, that is one...
Like I've never seen it before, as long as I've been here.
That, that is one reason that any capital and any personnel requests are not immediately placed in those departments, that they're held, um, until such time that Mr. Brown releases those funds. So, um, nobody will be coming out of the chute in July, purchasing large capital items, knowing that it, it can be covered by fund balance. So what we do is we, we hold it. I guess if it doesn't break, we don't fix it. We don't necessarily buy a new one. But you, yes, if we're covering capital items through the use of fund balance, we're very careful about how we release, how we release them. And again, those are held in a separate account, um, until such time that we do get to, to preview the digest and see if the digest did provide enough real growth and reassessed growth that it's going to cover what you've, what you've done here.
That's been our method. Commissioner Stevens?
Ms. Kim, go back to the revenue page.
This?
Yeah. I just want to say this. I like to make sure that we are collecting all of the taxes that can be collected in Liberty County, homeowners, businesses, and industries. I do have an issue with industries, because I've got a fairness feeling that we've got some industries out there that's not paying their fair share. And if it is, if you all recall, I did send out an email, ask some questions. Can certain people be allowed to collect taxes from industries that are not paying their fair share to the tax commissioner downstairs? I am going to pursue that issue, no matter what it takes. But we can have industries, but if they're not doing their share, what good are they, they're actually being a burden to Liberty County? So that's one thing that somehow or another, it needs to be looked into. And that could have helped out, helped out the revenue side. If someone else is holding this money, why are they holding it? How long have they been holding it? Do they have a right to hold it?
Yeah. I, I, I would not know the details of that. My office doesn't, does not bill or collect for taxes. We receive those proceeds from the tax commissioner's office, completely separate system. But I understand your concern.
Yes. Now, one other issue. Last year, when we took over EMS, I may have mentioned that if we could have just gotten a small millage rate back from the hospital, and it was defeated. How much is one mil right now? Ms. Kim?
It's probably roughly around 1.4 million dollars.
And what is the cost of the EMS service for employees roughly?
I want to say their budget's about 0.7 maybe? I don't remember it completely off the top of my head. Just for personnel, is 1.8. I know that much.
My point is, to everyone out there, that when the commissioners took over EMS... we took on a, an animal. The hospital was left with that 3.8 mil, and now the commissioners have to eat that 3.8 mil increase, more or less, it's close to it. That is the only authority that we have, board that we as commissioners can actually go and alter their millage rate. We still need to take a look at it this year. Because how was the hospital surviving all the time before with 3.8 mil? You had these employees, now you don't have these employees, but you still got that 3.8 mil. I'm not saying taking everything away from it, from them. Let's look at a piece of the pie to help us out, sitting up here. One more other issue, free port. We had a meeting the other day. The numbers that was thrown out on the amount of free port that is allowed in Liberty County for your one year is in the millions of dollars, millions. We need to take a look at it. And I'm not sitting up here saying take everything away, when nobody won't come to Liberty County, but don't give them the country stove for lifetime. Thank you.
Over here?
Yes, sir.
You know, Mr. Chairman.
I couldn't hear whatever.
Just a few questions. I, with the, I guess for the salary and wages, can, can we get a breakdown? Of course, you know, the increase is almost four million. I'm, I'm assuming, am I right? Wrong page?
I think it's about two, can you go to the expenditures? Right there, uh, almost four million.
Almost four million, okay.
And two, about 2.6 of that is new requests this year.
Okay.
The other is the recurring that was implemented.
You're like reading my mind. How? I don't know. So, so new requests for salaries and, and wages was, what percentage?
Keep going, no, other way. Right, that, oh, so right there, additional personnel benefits, almost 2.6 million.
Okay.
So of that 3.8 million, about 2.6.
2.6.
It's about new.
And that's new positions and wages, are you saying, or is that?
Yes, new positions, um, and then the, the collet, the merit, and the longevity. Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, yeah, that part. And that's, that's not including what we already had with EMS and, and fire?
No, some of that is EMS and fire up there and public safety. So there are.
So that's included in, in, into this 2.6 as well?
Yes, yes. The 2.6 right there. There is still some new requests for fire and, and EMS.
And the other departments, okay.
And others' departments.
But the total above that also includes bringing on those people that you brought on the halftime last year in phasing in, in the fire, and some jailers also that were approved early on.
Of the 3.8, yeah, we, he, I think he was just talking about this 2.6, right?
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, out, out of the salary and wages, out of the four million, how many new positions are created out of that? Other than the ones that we brought on, of course, from EMS, there's nothing we could do with that.
You should have a list, there's a detailed list where it says, see it? Where it says a lot of those positions are brought on half a year. You, you had two, um, stapled detail, and it should show you all of the.
Improve funding.
It looks like this.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And that'll list everything.
Okay.
Right.
I'm picking up.
So, Ms. Kim?
Yes, sir.
So, on the firefighters, how many actually came on this year, and how many firefighters that were already on, this would be their first year?
Say, say that again now, how many? So we were budgeted to get another, the, the last round of eighteen this year. And this year was staggered eighteen. But by the end of the year, we should have all thirty-six here, if we're able to fill all vacancies. And, and as you know, that's hard to do right now. Hard to get firefighters, hard to get law enforcement folks, hard to get jailers, even hard to get paramedics and EMTs.
Hard to get almost anybody.
But your 2.5, you'll see the detail of that.
Okay, alright, uh.
Anybody else before we open it up?
Alright, I just wanna make a.
I was gonna, go ahead, if you want to, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Well, no, go ahead.
Well, I was, I, I know this is public hearing, and we're not, um, through with the eraser and the pencil.
Right, right. This can change before you adopt next week, yes.
I think, um, I mean, at this point right here, the questions that I had, the questions that some other folks have, and probably the public, and I don't know if the chairman's gonna have questions, or he may have answers, but I'm gonna just say, it looks to me like we probably, and we'll leave that up to you and Joey and Joseph. And I'll be glad to sit in, and we'll see if we can whittle a little bit more off to make it. And during that time, we may be able to get an answer on the free port. We see about the millage on the hospital. I don't know what the legislation is on that. Joey, what was it? It was set aside for the county to form a board for the hospital authority, but there was never.
Actually, actually, it was created under the Hospital Authorities Act, so it really wasn't anything the Board of Commissioners created. It was created by local legislation. So, um, it specifies, the law, the, uh, state law specifies how much millage the hospital can assess total, uh, for urgent care purposes, and then it's up to the commission to adopt the final millage.
So, at this point, do you, though, anybody that's approached them about saying, hey, we've taken this back, can we get?
We, we don't, because at this point, we're adopting the budget, and we're not doing the millage. So, I mean, that's the reason, I think, as we work through the budget, you see the majority of those proposed positions coming in at half a year, starting in January, so that you get a look at the millage and the digest, it can have those discussions before these people ever come on board. And if you decide during that time that the millage is not sufficient, you wanna lower it, you wanna raise it, whatever it is, then, then these positions aren't early filled, and out there, you can come back and take a red pen to those halftime positions.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the, the, the three mils that's, is it three mils total at the hospital?
3.8.
A little over, 3.5 or 3.8.
I don't, it's over three.
Might be 3.4.
But, I mean, has anybody, Mr. Chairman, have you approached them? Have you heard anything?
No, no, we have not, kinda like you were saying, we're waiting to see, but our. Yeah, but our, our inside source is system, I write, who's our liaison to the hospital authority. And during the budget process, she, she advised us, and I don't know if you wanna share that again, what you said when we talked about, perhaps, um, the amount of funding they get for, uh, well, the, the difference between, uh, kinda like what Commissioner Stevens said, what they were getting, then now us taking over EMS, and if they could perhaps solve a, a decrease in funding.
And, and they might could, like I said, or we talked about earlier, they have not finalized their budget. Whenever they get their budget finalized, then, when we go through the process of the millage rate here, and then they'll decide. Then they'll bring it back to us.
Right, they have a totally different fiscal year, too, so.
Right, right. So they'll bring it back to us as to how much. They may wanna keep it where it's at, they may wanna lower it. They have not approached us yet as to what the, you know, what they wanna set at.
I thought they were gonna come back before y'all, like, once or twice a year, and give you some sort of update.
I've talked to Tammy, and she said that she, excuse me, she was gonna try to get back on the, um, agenda, to come back and give us an update.
Now that we're open up again, kinda.
Right, yeah, but there's no doubt. I think as a citizen of Liberty County, I want, I want the ambulances to stay as Liberty County, myself. I don't know how the others feel. There's no doubt. It doesn't make money. Fire doesn't make money. And neither does the ambulance, but we have to have those services, to me, available to our citizens. When we call nine-one-one, we want somebody to come. So, you know, I, I can't see not having an ambulance here, and I, I know you can't either, Commissioner Stevens, but other than that, you would have, and I hate to say that word, you would have to get a private one in here, and we wouldn't have probably a whole lot of control of any of those folks.
Well, make no mistake about it.
But whenever we get ready to do the millage, it will come back. And at that time, we can have discussion. Maybe by then, we'll know, and we can ask them, hey, we might need to lower this thing a little bit.
I don't think that there's anything that this board.
We, we, we can give them a hand.
No, no, what I'm saying is so they could plan their budget accordingly.
Yeah, but they're on a physical, but they made.
I understand, 'cause what I'm saying is, if they're gonna plan their budget, like it is, is set now, I mean.
Well, they might, but we're gonna.
Well, and, and.
I don't know any CFO that wasn't.
We don't need a hospital, and I'm not gonna say that we don't need a airport. I don't own a boat, I don't own an airplane. But I can tell you that one thing that's important is the hospital. The other thing is getting to the hospital.
Exactly.
But we're not in it to make any money. I can tell you, the day that we sit up here and decide we need to have X, Y, and Z to make money, then, then we're, we're going away from home. What we gotta do is provide the service. Chairman can tell you, and they never made any money off the books that they had at all the high schools or elementary. We just wanna provide that quality education, but we also wanna provide whatever we need to for our citizens. Now, you know, people will say, the hospital makes this, the sheriff's office makes that. That's not, when we start telling people that we're making money, then what we're doing, we're going away from home. I just want us to break even, and that's all. But we got to plan, like you said, accordingly. If we can afford to give these folks a raise, then that's what we're gonna try to do, because they've got to have some longevity there. Continuity means a whole lot. So, I just, my first statement was, let's, let's see if we can't get it down a little bit more. If we can, fine. If we can't, I might not vote for it, but that's just gonna be the way it's gonna be.
Give it your best, that's right, give it your best.
Well, I think we've all, and I, I've tried to give it my best. And that's all I'm gonna say about it. I'm through.
We have in previous years, Mr. Chairman, we have asked them, and we did approve one time when they wanted an increase in, in their millage, so. We're gonna work through it.
We are.
Yeah, I think, I would say their fiscal year starts in November, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think it's November.
Yeah, so they'll have plenty of time to see the digest and plan accordingly.
And they may be able to back off, so.
That's right, that's right, and I, they may.
Oh, oh, yeah, and, and one more thing, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna solve, be in consideration, uh, you know, on, on the federal level as well. And, you know, that our word is starting to be thrown around, so we, we might wanna make sure that, that we're kinda physical. Be responsible with, with our funding, just in, just in case that, that does come up.
This board really has done that, ever since I've been here with.
I didn't wanna say it, there you go.
Fund balance.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
You have a strong fund balance.
Right.
And you've heard your auditors tell you that.
Absolutely.
And, and it is because of your fund balance policy that we have been able to do these one-time capital things to where you haven't had to have property taxes covered, that you've, you know, you've taxed before for things, and any savings you accumulate, and, and you kind of are able to cover it that way. But, um, you have a good, strong fund balance. But I agree, we shouldn't always be crutching on that.
Right.
I hear you.
And, and I remember one of our, I first took my hand off the Bible and said here, we, we weren't there. One of the reasons why we weren't there is because we was coming out of that, that word I, I don't like to, to use. So the only thing I'm saying is, let's, let's keep that in consideration as well.
Mr. Chair, I've got one more. Ms. Kim, Mr. Brown, so within these papers, it's telling us everything that has been officially cut will be, or will be looked at.
It's everything that the committee, that's everything that the committees, the commission, uh, as we went through the workshops, recommended. And we've simply put it on paper, and then, as Kim mentioned, found alternative funding sources for the capital stuff, uh, from existing revenue sources.
Now, when you say commissioners, nothing has changed since the ones who were able to participate in the budget process has been taken off since then.
Nothing, nothing has changed since your last meeting, correct?
Okay.
And just for the public's information, yeah, 'cause I know you all not looking what we're looking at. Uh, the approval list for personnel, that's the twenty-five number that.
Yep.
And the disapproval list is about twenty-eight.
About 2.8?
2.8.
Yeah.
2.8, so I just wanna.
And that's just personnel, it's not capital.
Yeah, so they'll know, yeah, there's been a lot of whittling that's going on.
It was, and it, and it was, it was painful.
Yeah.
It's painful.
Yeah, yeah. Say this too, and then we're gonna open up to the public, uh, you mentioned it already, you know, that, that's, I just like folks to know, especially those who may be looking at it on the live stream, we took over EMS, and that was a new venture for us, and all that came with that, and trying to set the budget, and they have a whole different budgeting process, and we did the best we could, we're trying to, to build their budget. Most times, you can just go on historical information, but with them, we could not, because even the way they did their budgeting and financing was different, so we had to.
Definitely a different animal. We're still working through it in finance.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it, both of y'all.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You've, uh, I, I hope I've told you a bunch of times, but I do appreciate the time that you spend on it, Kim. I mean, I know it takes, and you're killing, I don't know how many trees here every time. But I mean, I just feel like it's necessary now as it's ever been, so.
Thank you, sir. Next thing, you keep mentioning fire, for a good reason. Uh, what, how many years now? Three years ago, we started this, maybe a little late, oh, John McGaw was, when we first started the process,
Right.
to go toward a, um, a county-wide fire service, because we did not have that, ladies and gentlemen. There were people in Liberty County who could call nine-one-one for fire, and no one came. No one was there to come.
The house burned.
And the house burned. It could have, and thank God we hadn't had loss of lives, but out in unincorporated Liberty County. So we get spoiled living in Heinzville, you know, but there are others in the county that don't have that kind of coverage. So we made a commitment as a commission that we would provide comprehensive fire service to all of unincorporated Liberty County.
And, and it's fire and rescue, because you got, you have a lot of.
Both of them together.
You know, things, too.
May, may seem like big numbers, but those are very important numbers, and something that we talked, we had, we did town halls. We did town halls, and, and the citizens, uh, gave us the, the go-ahead to go ahead and, uh, stand up for that department.
Those numbers are going to get bigger.
Yeah, uh, but you know, if you're gonna have staff, you gotta pay them, you know, you gotta pay them. They benefit, some things come with them. But it's just a blessing to be able to know that you can call nine-one-one and somebody is coming.
Yes, sir.
As versus you sitting there watching your house going to the ground, or, or have a loved one who not have someone to respond. You're right, it's not all just fire, also. A first response thing, too. Another thing that I mentioned, and we opened it up, is fuel. All the departments came before this time with increases in their fuel lot, because guess what? Gas is going up, so everybody that has vehicles, they beefed up their, that item, that line item for fuel, because of the cost of fuel. Same thing goes on your house, goes on in the county's houses. It's the very same thing, so everybody had to.
If you'll remember, even when the, um, sheriff's department turned in their budget, um, we increased what they asked for fuel, because we knew, you know, 'cause they submitted it back in, what, March or first of April, and, you know.
And the road department, and the road department.
And the road department, yes, sir.
And I wanna commend this commission on, as Kim said, on having a, a healthy fund balance. We've worked hard to do that, so that we have these funds to help us out, so we wouldn't have to depend totally on, uh, on property taxes. So it's good to have that balance to bail you out with those things, because we are a growing county, and there are several things that affect our, our bottom line. So you have done well to, to have that. And Commissioner Frager, you're right, there was a time, we didn't have that, didn't have that. So you've done well, and we're very frugal. Uh, Mr. Mr. Brown, he runs a tight ship when it comes to finances. And, and really, our departments participate with us, they incorporate with us, have some good conversations, but several department heads, constitutional officers, where everybody has, has bought into doing what's best for the county, so there, there just comes a time when you have to come to the realization, you've done the best that you can do. Now, we will wait for the digest to see what that proves to us. We've seen some growth in the county, everybody's seen it. We're hoping that gonna pay off for us, that we will be able to utilize that to help cover not all the, uh, because as I mentioned before, there's a long list of things we denied, you know? And, and those things won't change when, when the digest comes, because guess what? We have to maintain our fund balance. You mentioned it before, you don't know what's coming up, you know? Uh, these things happen. These things happen, sometimes the capital, unless you're right, we have set aside, but some things, we just have to go ahead and replace, you know. We can't have folk working without AC, you know, and things like that just happen. Of course, you know, when you talk about buying fire trucks and stuff like that, oh my gosh, you know, those are very expensive vehicles. But do we need them? Yeah, to stand up our fire department. So, there are things that we will just have to have, to have a progressive county, and a county that functions and functions well. So, that's kinda where, it is a balance, there ain't no doubt about it, it is a balance in that, but.
I said for the last year, we do the best with less.
Yeah, we do, and have done.
Been doing in my department.
And have done, you're right, there's some people who need things, and they, I won't call their names, they hate them ass for them. Sometimes we've insisted, no, go ahead and replace that, go ahead and replace that, all right. So, I can say that I feel comfortable with the requests that have come forward. And guess what, when we tell them no, I mean, nobody likes to be told no, but they accept it, you know, they accept it. And we just tell them why we can't do it that time, then maybe, there's several things on this, we say, well, this is a repeat request. Three years ago, they asked for this.
Right.
Three years ago, they asked for this, all right. So, this time, if I can, okay.
Ms. Kim.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And now, where you say you're going next year?
I don't know.
The house.
I don't know.
We need you to come back next year.
Sitting right there.
But really, thank you for what you do, and let me say to Mr. Chair, to all of the safety departments within the county, you got law enforcement that protects the lives, we got fire that saves lives and property, and saves a lot of the homeowners a lot of money in the long run on their home insurance. We got EMS that goes out, pick you up and take you to the hospital. So, all of it's important, but also, during the same time, we have to keep in mind that we have to look out for Aunt Mary and Uncle John down the road down there with their taxes going up.
We, before, I promise you, going to the public, we had Mrs. Roberts come for us yesterday, the other day, and she's gonna, we're gonna program her to come back to speak to the commission on the assessments. Notice that went out very briefly, I may do, you may have to bail me out, you two may bail me out. The county has to do reassessments periodically, there's no choice. You get fined as a county if you don't do periodic assessments. You cannot take 10 years another assessment, do reassessments, you can't do that. You will get fined and pay out money, all right. So, you all have seen what's been happening in the real estate market, how houses and apartments, how everything's selling, and it's selling at these. Can I say astronomical?
There's a ratio that I believe the assessors have to be in, a percentage ratio, that they have to be within on those sales. So, yeah, they're reviewed by the Department of Revenue.
So, that's, in fact, on my notice, it says market adjustment, you saw that on your notice, hope you read it. That's why she put that on there, because of the market rate, that happened all over the country, not just Liberty County, all over the country. So, they had to do the reassessment, and some people will see increased assessment for your properties, which of course will require an increase in your property taxes, but that's where that comes from. But the assessment is done by tax assessors office, and of course, we get to set the millage, the millage time. So, if you hadn't seen this, you know, you have, how many days to appeal until July?
Forty-five days from the time, you know, from the date.
And they're open to appealing, and we've invited, we've advised her, advised the smaller cities to have her come to their meeting, so that their citizens will hear first on what's going on. We don't want you to be in the dark about what's happening. It's not done arbitrarily, I promise you that, there's a process to it, there's a process to it. Now, you may not agree with it, but there's a process to it, there's a process to everything, all right. So, I wanted to get that out, because I noticed this went out, but this time, we're gonna open up for questions that the general public will have since we're in a public hearing. Does anyone have a question that hadn't been answered? Certainly, you can, Ms. McGlothlin and Mr. Brown, I have to take phone calls if you wanna do it one-on-one, just be mindful of the time, but they'll do that for you, in case you wanna do them. Oh, you may.
Full budget details is online, so you can always answer any questions.
Yeah, but just know this started with a process of a lot of folk coming forward saying, you know, here's what our list are, that we might function effectively, see, the sheriff and Richard here, I'm gonna call them out, Brian here. Those folk would say the list they put forward are what they need to effectively run their department. Then on the commissioner's part, it's our job to go through those things, and then based on funding, you know, do the yeas and the nays, yeas and nays, you know. But we try to make sure everybody has at least what they need, you know, for that necessity, that's always our mission, trying to do that. But that's how.
That means you did a pretty good job.
Online, my email address is on the website too, under finance, so feel comfortable asking now.
But let me just make this point one more time, you heard about why she keeps saying fire, you heard about why she keeps saying EMS, and we're all talking about fuel, that's in everybody's house, major factors. And now, we're gonna digest this come to find out what the property values are, so we'll know how best we can support this budget through funding that comes through our property taxes.
You know, one thing we didn't mention, when you talk about benefits and employees, you know, with our, I think I might have told you, you know, five years ago, when my payroll person started, we had about 400 employees. The last payroll run we did, there was 646 payroll checks we ran. Now, for your full-time benefits, health insurance went up 10% this year, 10%. So, you know, when you have cost increases, not just in fuel, but also in services, those have to be absorbed.
Any business personnel is gonna be your most expensive line item?
Yes.
Always.
It's your most valuable line item.
It is, it is, it is, it is, it is. And you talk about services, essential services, man, I'm glad mosquito control is one of my, couldn't do without mosquito control.
You can go to another county, though, and they don't have it, you know.
I don't know how they.
That's a matter of opinion again.
I don't know how they do it. All right, Chair, ten more to come out of public hearing then.
Move.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, and is anybody seconded it?
Say that again? All right, you want me to answer that, or, Mr. Chair, one of y'all?
What was the question?
About insurances, yeah.
Certainly welcome to bid it out. We searched the market this year for comparable counties, not only what the cost is, but what the plans are. And we have one of the most lucrative plans that's out there for employees, buy a national provider.
In other words, we looked at that almost a year.
And we were, I'm sorry.
I'll be glad to get with him later.
And we were able to, to provide, what's this new plan that we have, I'm looking at my fire chief out there, so I knew we had, we had a hard time at one time with firemen, but now we added this new category, for lack of a better word, that's gonna help us out with that.
What we kept hearing, and not always so, but what we kept hearing was that the premium cost for family members, per family rate was too high. So, we added a third option this year for a lower cost, and opened that, or an open enrollment, and had one person.
Had one person, really? Oh, so much of that?
Doesn't turn out to be, you know.
Okay, after all.
Doesn't turn out to be exactly.
Well, it's there.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, now, I know that's, it's been a while, so that motion is dead, can I have that motion again?
Yes, sir, I'll make the motion, we go back in regular session.
Is it second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise it right here, all right.
And Mr. Chairman, I wanted to recognize the chairman of the appointment committee, for some reason, he may need to intercheck something here about, well, we're gonna do this, but it's not on our agenda for tonight, but it's supposed to be, right?
It's supposed to be, yeah.
The board appointments, don't move, we got those back. Maria got them back, I didn't get that signal, so I apologize.
Yeah, she had them, she sent them out.
I think she sent them to Gary.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't get that, so.
Could we, I mean, we are ready, but I mean.
Yeah, we can amend the agenda.
Absolutely, whatever you all wanna do.
And I didn't pick up on that either when I previewed it.
Yeah.
Reviewed it, excuse me.
Yeah, if we can amend the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Include the board appointments.
All right.
Do we need to vote on?
We make them item 6D.
6D?
Yes, sir.
Do we, we need, you need that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that may, we amend the agenda for tonight's meeting to include the board appointments.
One second.
One second, can you defer the discussion, all in favor, raise your hands, please. All right, thank you, I missed that, all right. All right, Contract United Way, Mr. Dodge? Am I on?
Mr. Chairman, why Mr. Dodge is coming up? Commissioner Walden did say something about maybe getting the red pen out and maybe revisiting the budget one more time. Is that something we gonna do, or we, I mean, because we got to do something pretty soon with what we presented tonight. I mean, were we gonna try to edit it, or mention that, were we gonna try to do that one more time, or are we good with this?
Well, I can assure you that the list they gave us, and those of us who participate, we whittle and whittle and whittle, but certainly, you can look at it again.
Well, no, no, I'm not saying that we need to, I'm saying it was brought up, and are we gonna do it, or has it been whittled?
It's been whittled.
Okay, well, no sense in doing it then.
My suggestion would only be what we admit, well, Kim's gone, and Joey's gone, but constitutional officers, whoever's out there that understand what, that was here tonight, they understand where we're at, they can do it, or later on, we'll wind up having to do it. I mean, that's the only, the only thing we can do.
We've had some, what's the word, in the hospital, we've had some courageous conversations.
Mr.?
We've had some courageous conversations with them about.
Well, I mean, I've had, I have some with the banker every once in a while. And you know what he says?
Yes, sir.
He said, you pay now or pay later.
I just know that there was some questions that Commissioner Stevens brought up, and with Mr. Walden mentioned that, I didn't know if we were gonna come back one more time, and during that time, try to get some answers to things Mr. Commissioner Stevens talked about, or, I mean, but if we good, we good.
Mr. Chairman, I also understood that, even though we're where we at now, that we were gonna revisit what we have before we made a final decision on it, and I think I was assured that we would, before this becomes final, that we would put the pin back to it, or revisit it.
Can revisit it, yes, sir.
Under your budget calendar, you have to adopt it next week. It was put out a month ago to the board, and that's the reason we had to have those meetings when we did, to come back to the finalization of the budget, so.
Tell them next week, have the meeting next Thursday.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so you have between now and then to.
Well, I think the conversation was gonna be with the hospital, I think the conversation might have.
Development authority?
The development authority, as far as, you know, is there anything?
See, that's.
It doesn't affect the budget. I mean, that will affect how you potentially fund the budget, but as far as what you leave in and take out of the budget. It, it, I'm not gonna say it's immaterial at this point, but.
Well, I think the questions Commissioner Stevens had were, you know, good concerns, and I mean, if they could be addressed at another time, then we'll address them at another time, but I think.
We will.
We were also looking at what was presented tonight, to see if there was anything in there that we could take out.
And my only suggestion there is if you have any recommendations, if you'll float those out before next week, but then the board, and we can make those recommendations known to all the board members, so that when you meet next week, you can either say, yes, we're gonna take these out, or no, you know, y'all can decide as a group, if you wanna make any further cuts to these, to those sheets.
Look at these sheets that Kim gave us.
To those sheets.
It says approved, if you wanna make some recommendations on there, then that's where you need to do it.
My only thing is, is, you know, we had pretty much agreed somewhere, and I might have been sleeping, but we wanted to have a little bit more fund balance than what we had up there. Joey, and the other thing was, is right now, the public knows, and some of these administrators know what we're up against. Now, they can change it, or next year, I'm not gonna listen to it, that's what I was saying, I was just, we'll change it for them, so.
Right, so just to make sure, now, hey, we're kinda backing up and digressing, I apologize. But, so the amount that's shown on this sheet right here, that Kim, is not the amount that's left in fund balance.
Right.
Right, and it is not just fund balance. The other financing uses is what gets brought into the budget, it also includes loan proceeds for outstanding loans that you have. So, that's not the amount you're gonna draw out of fund balance this year. You still will have, even with what's projected, to use only for capital items. That's the only thing fund balance gets used for, is non-recurring items. You'll still have about seven months of operational reserves, and your policy says you'll have between three and seven, so you still will be in good shape, no matter what you bring forward. Well, actually, what you'll bring forward out of fund balance is projected to be $612,900.
Okay, and how many capital items have we already discussed that we were looking at? I'm talking about capital items out here, buildings?
Yes, you are, yeah, yes, sir.
Property and all.
As a matter of fact, on these sheets, if you look at what's proposed to be funded with other sources, you'll fund a million dollars in capital items, just not out of fund balance. You'll fund them out of existing revenues in 2022, you'll fund them out of ARPA, and you'll fund them out of sales tax six funds, all of which already exist.
Okay, and those things are, that I'm thinking about, which is capital items, is gonna be the help, the, the coroner's office?
That would be on sales tax seven, proposed to be on seven.
And we got the pass at the sales tax seven.
Understand, understand.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, 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 we've made arrangements for everything you've talked about.
It's on these sheets.
Yep.
But I just wanna make sure that we're using what we have got available before we start asking for something that's, that if it don't show up, then it's gonna wind up being millage raised.
That's, yes, sir, that's what you see on these sheets.
And I guess what we're saying, Mr. Chairman, is that instead of a meeting, look at this information that we have, and if we want anything changed, just send it in.
Yes, sir.
Or consideration.
Get it in.
You can, and then we'll summarize it for your next meeting, when you come back, we'll take the same list, and y'all can, you know.
But Thursday's the meeting, right?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday's the meeting, yes, correct.
And it's gotta be done before.
We need those no later than Monday, in order to be able to summarize them.
You get, if we get out of here, you get mine tonight by nine.
And again, we're not gonna make any adjustments as staff, all we're gonna do is summarize the recommendations on changes, plus or minus, and we'll bring them back, and we'll highlight them up here, and then you can actually make the adjustments in your meeting next Thursday.
Okay.
Well, my memory's not that long anymore, so that's one reason why I just wanted this to.
Right.
Now, Gary's, he's got a.
Autographic and.
No, he got the mind of a Siamese cat, don't forget nothing. Don't forget nothing.
But for those of you, I know everybody was able to participate in the budget here, this is, we came up with, this is where this came from.
Yeah, that's, I.
That's where it came from.
Looked at it, but I just.
We sat down and spent a lot of hours going through this stuff.
Fund balance.
Okay. We're good.
You're good?
I nearly turned out this chair.
Yeah, that's what, this came from the, yes, this, no, that, yes, this, no, 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 that, that's what we wound up with, working with the staff. But look at it again, no problem whatsoever.
Okay, all right.
We get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Dodge, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Hey, so what we got tonight is a memorandum of agreement with the United Way, with the Coastal Empire. I'm gonna let Ms. Kristen talk about it, the MOU.
Good evening. So, pretty much, we've been working, we've been working with the MA directors throughout the Coastal Empire to formulate a group for disasters. So, much like the disaster that just happened with the tornadoes in Bryan County, we've been working with them as the fiscal agent to say, the Bryan County government will say, United Way is where you would send your funding to. And then those directors get together, and they decide how that money is allocated, for how much is for the community and the residents that need help with roofing, you know, glass removal, debris, stuff like that. And so, we want to pull Liberty County in as well, as one of the last communities we're trying to get on board, just in case of a disaster. We're not asking for anything, we're just asking that we come together as a community in times of disaster, we'll be that agent to help take those donations, whether it's physical donations, because we have a warehouse full in Bryan County of all kind of things, that we're using to pass out to the, to the different families that need help, we're that agency that they come to for those resources, and we staff and man that, not asking for anything there at all either. Like I said, we just want everybody to have a seat at the table, to bring all those funds together, and decide, collect. to bring all those funds together and decide collectively as the Coastal Empire, how those funds are gonna be allocated during times of disaster, if it affects all four regions.
How is it done now with, without Liberty County being in the circle?
This is, this has all started over the last year. So we brought in, of course, Chatham's already there, Effingham's at the table. We're finalizing with Brian and I've been speaking with Mr. Dodd and Mr. Brown over the last year trying to, you know, formulating and get the agreement going.
Mr. Chairman, so current, you talking about funds. Where would these funds come from? What type of, the ones that are played from United?
Much like, like with Bryan County, Gulfstream and different corporations and things, gift funding individual donors, people have just been, you know, dropping off. We'll tell them where drop-off locations are for physical things as well and we'll store those and help distribute. And it also affects agencies as well that provide services to those individuals as well, just not, you know, the normal day-to-day. That'll also be a discussion between whoever you guys designate to be that participant, to decide how those funds will be allocated to the different areas, wherever we see need during that time.
Right, okay. I hear you very well, I'm just wondering, so without you guys doing that, is done, helped us, helped us, it's kind of?
Right, so it wasn't formalized in Bryan County before the tornadoes came. So initially, there was a lot of different pots and then that's when, you know, everybody got together. Emergency management was like, okay, we need to formalize this somehow. Um, you know, and because you had just, everybody wanted to help, but nobody knew necessarily how to help or what's needed. So we would be that agent to communicate that based off of what everybody says at the table to the public, so they have that one place to bring those donations. Everybody's at the table to know where it's going, complete transparency and to help make the decision on how to allocate those things.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I guess that's more like with the drive that the Sheriff Department and Fire Department and myself, we put on when it was time to deliver, we had to look for someone in Bryan County to take it to. So finally, I got a hold to the mayor and she said, take it over to the old Jim. So that's, I do understand what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
What does this do with Coastal Empire chapter of the United Way? What is, the United Way and Coastal, you know, I mean, all of the businesses throughout the region, they have the fund drives. Will y'all be involved in that?
Yes, sir. So if, whatever counties participate, who say they want the United Way to represent them, that's who will be at the table and we'll discuss that. So then we'll all decide where those items need to go. You know, if you guys want us to take those donations on behalf of the county and your citizens, and then the decision will be made how to allocate them.
I just have never seen that before during times of, I mean, United Way's been here a long time. I used to work with Georgia Power and we would always have the drive and the money was donated out of our checks to the United Way. And then, I mean, we've had disasters from, you know, Florida to North Carolina and then in our coastal area here, I wondered who handled it then?
Well, speaking as far as my experience with the United Way since I've been here, during the pandemic, it hasn't been formalized. But because the United Way located here in Hinesville is part of the United Way of the Coastal Empire, when they raised funds for, when, at the beginning of the pandemic, we were able to draw down some of those funds that they raised in that, in the other regions, just because we're a part of the United Way of the Coastal Empire.
So the way, yeah, so the way the structure works, and we do that too, and being on the United Way Board formally, I mean, so they do the fund drive every year where people donate out of their checks and they raise money. And then they have an allocation committee that sits down once a year and they decide how those allocations are made in the Coastal Empire region to organizations that apply for funds. And this is a little different. What this is, is only in disaster situations. You may remember when Matthew came through, we really reached out and said, do we have anybody locally? Everybody else had left town. Is there anybody that can help us take in funds, take in supplies and help get those out to the people that need them? And United Way raised a hand, which was the only person that was there to say, okay. So kind of what this is, is a realization of that different piece than the normal fundraising effort. So from donations during times of disaster and before disasters, not associated with regular fundraising events, they solicit that so that they have a storage, if you will. And so for the people that participate, when Bob signals and says, I need somebody that can interview those homeless people, I need somebody that can help them with daily supplies that come out, that's what this would do. And in Matthew, there was, again, they stepped up and said, yes, but there was no agreement, there was no formalization. Things were moving too fast and after the Brian tornadoes, I guess, you know, the realization is that, hey, that you do need some kind of agreement in place pre-disaster to be able to handle those.
What about the, I mean, are other cities are tied into it then? I mean, through Bob?
Correct, yes.
You've already, I mean, that's the decision that the mayors and the councils and all other cities, you've already been to them and talked to them about it or?
Well, he'll be tied in by nature of EMA being the controlling force in emergency situations. They, I don't say they don't have any choice, but they could choose to do something else in their cities for fundraising efforts or for dissemination of supplies, but they're automatically in by nature of being a city in Liberty County through EMA.
Well, you know, we got, we got a county where he's already going home, ain't he? We got a county fire chief and then some of the other little town, you know. Hinesville's got their chief, Waldenville's got their chief. So I'm just saying, I mean, Bob, you know, you ask him for a lot to take, take on.
We don't want EMA in the county, sir.
I know. I know, but anytime you get something like that, that big, you gonna have a bunch of mosses, so.
I worked closely with Kristen and I, I mean.
Well, I mean, you'd be the one that can answer all the questions. I mean, I hope that we don't never have to do it.
Every time we went over there, I mean, she's been very, very helpful with it.
Well, that's good.
I think the good news is they've become another hand for us and he's able to pass off and say, this is what y'all will do during that time or asked to do under disagreement. And then they'll interview and see people from all cities in the county. So it'll be good.
You live in Liberty County?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's great, then, that's, it's settled.
So they have a fiduciary for, that's good.
Your motion?
Channel those funds through some.
Yes, sir.
Reliable, trustworthy source so that keep away all the scams and all that kind of stuff, too.
Right, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And I think the main thing too is, of course, transparency and we want to be transparent about what we're doing and we want the community to know that we're there to support them. And we've, like Mr. Bob said, we've worked over the years, nothing formal, but we've always been there in support. So just to take it to the next level, I think, would be beneficial.
Could somebody have a separate board? It's gonna be a separate board, is it?
It is? It'll be a separate, it'll be a separate board that will just do this function. So the money doesn't get intermingled with the United Way funds, it's separate. Yeah, let's do it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we ready for motion?
So what's that, what's that board called? Separate board, what's its official?
Separate board of United Way, Liberty County. Official name. I saved y'all some time.
It'll be composed.
Creative, isn't it?
Consortium.
Mostly the EMA directors from each region, from each county and then whatever participating agents recognize at the United Way to help funnel that and, you know.
Okay.
It's gonna be more like a regional, a regional board?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm good, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, attend to motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the contract with United Way.
And I'll take it.
Second.
I was trying to give you a second, okay. All right, in further discussion, all in favor, raise your hands. All right. Thank you, I'm like you, hope we never have to use it, but if we do need to use it, it's there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
It's good to know it's gonna be streamlined and done in a professional and above-board kind of way.
That is our hope.
Yeah, and there'll be a go-to person or persons rather than hit and miss kind of thing, so.
Right, and of course, we'll still work with all the community partners as well, but like you said, streamline one place for the families to be able to go to and get those resources.
Last question, where you go is, as Mr. Brown was saying, in the weeds, because here's what I heard about Bryan County, that some stuff you guys have got too much of.
Absolutely. So that's, that comes again because people just wanted to donate. And so there was no one there to say, these are the needs initially.
I heard that.
So we, there's toothpaste for days.
I heard that.
So that's the kind of things you want to try to avoid, you know, to let the community know what the needs are so they can figure out how they can help, especially the individual.
Okay, community and the general public, okay.
Yes.
All right, you're on it, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Splash Seven project list.
Yes, sir, you got two or three handouts here before you, we had the.
Chairman.
Aye.
Chairman, did we vote on that? We made the motion.
We didn't vote, we took a motion a second.
We didn't vote, all in favor?
I voted.
I thought we did.
Thought you did too.
We was gonna vote, but you and Justin was.
I thought we did.
I gotta think about that.
Play tape back. All right.
We had, we had a follow-up meeting, as we mentioned at the last, with the chief elected officials as part of the Splash Seven process. And you may remember, in fact, I'll come back in a minute, which is a planning calendar. But the first sheet before you that has revised at the bottom is dated five thirty-one twenty-two, was the last list that after we came out of that meeting with them is recommended for consideration from the chief elected officials as part of the project. Also put in there the last sheet that this board saw about a week before that. So I've given you the old, I've given you the new. There aren't many suggested changes, but let me highlight just a couple with you. The first thing is, if you'll notice on the jail, on your old sheet, there was no money allocated for that. I think we left here last time and said, look, we probably need to put a placeholder in there for that with the remembrance that you, if it was not on the ballot for consideration, you could not shift funds over there later on if you decided to. So the recommended amount in there is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, at least initial for the jail. That also applies to the coroner facility, which under your list when we left here last time, because of balancing, there was, there was nothing there. So recommending to do that. Those amounts were taken from a couple of other small changes that were made. One was in the city, county and other entity public safety vehicle items. And I'll tell you that we feel comfortable that we'll be able to, in these lower amounts, still be able to fund those items. Those are patrol cars and things like that. Those amounts were reduced from three million to two million for the city and the county and then reduced from a hundred and twenty down to a hundred for those municipalities that have a share, have a police function present in the county. The other thing that happened is, so that, that made more money become appropriated at the bottom of your sheet, which is what you were, what we were trying to achieve, if you remember. In addition to placeholders, what we were trying to do is narrow that potential differential from last tax to this tax. And so when we shifted those down, that helped. The other thing that we did is, or is proposed, is the city of Hinesville in the county obviously get the larger percentages of this, which is, is based on the new census count, the old, the old numbers were. What we proposed to do is to lessen the county's percentage by two percent and lessen the city's of Hinesville percentage by two percent. When you do the spread, what it actually does is, is make everybody get better, even the county, because the city by giving up their two percent helped, you know, they get a larger share, so it helped everybody. All that hot air is to say, the focus, as we left here last time on your old sheet, for instance, and we, and we need to focus on percentages and not so much money, but if, if we assume that that percentage is collected in your old sheet, the county was gonna get thirty-three point seven nine percent. The county actually now gets thirty-six point seven percent and it's a combination of money movement from the top to the bottom and the city giving up some percentage. So if you look at a money differential, and again, I know we try not to focus too much on that because it's gonna bring in what it brings in percentage-wise, you were looking at a potential difference or a loss, a change in revenue, let's call it, of one point one five two million when we left here last. That now turns into a black number of eight thousand forty-nine dollars. So I know that what we were trying to do was, one thing, was get the county commission out of the red, realizing that all that y'all do with those monies and what you're able to move around, so that's the good news. And I won't read every number to you, but if you compare your old sheet to the new, you see what we did is lessen the negative impact across the board by those moves. And it was simply shifting some money from the top to the bottom and again, the city changing some of its percentages. Remember too, that what'll happen is the sheet, as you see it here, will really be replaced by an attachment to the intergovernmental agreements. And so for instance, Hinesville safety vehicle money that's allocated up top will end up being merged with a total dollar amount projected to the city in the intergovernmental agreement, okay? And that's a little confusing, but by the way of legal structure, that's what happened. The only things that will be left up top will be items like Justice Center, Parks and Recreation, Event Entertainment Center, those type of things, which are county-wide projects. In the intergovernmental agreement though, those will be county projects. So your old IGA said Liberty County will do the following and it basically trails the money. So that's where the money is gonna end up being administered, is through that IGA and through those groups. So I know it's kind of confusing without having the IGA in front of you, that's being drafted now based on this list and can be changed, obviously, with whatever y'all want to do. But good news, I think that's just good news in the end. We went away with a mission to lessen the burden at the bottom on the commission and cities and we've been able to find a mechanism to do that. We've been able to go in there and plug some seed money in to those projects you want to plug it into, so that you have the flexibility there. And we did make a couple of other changes, which were minor, but parks and recreation instead of recreation, if you remember.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir, and also event slash entertainment center. So those funds could be used for either and, or both, so.
That's why I got elected, be up here to entertain. And I tell you, out of sixty-nine million, eight thousand dollars is a black.
I'm sorry, I, I mean, I got kids.
Huh?
I, I have kids that I have to spend money outside of Liberty County, especially during the summertime. And I'm just one of thousands of people in Liberty County who have school-aged kids during the summertime that don't have anything to do and they're spending their money outside of Liberty County. I apologize, I'm trying to keep Liberty County money here.
Was he down here at the baseball field today?
Who? Nah, he's not playing baseball.
Huh?
You said what now?
I said I was at the baseball field today and.
Yeah.
It was full of little baseball players.
Mr. Chairman.
It's All-Star.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question please, Mr. Brown, I was looking down at the bottom section of that first page, Liberty County unincorporated?
Yes, sir.
And it's showing the difference in the black over there, that's eight thousand dollars. So that's an eight thousand dollar difference from our distributions from six to seven, as far as the individual districts?
Potentially, potentially.
All right, so.
If we go by just dollars today, right.
But I think we, or I did, and then some of us others raised some concerns about the split. I guess I would say that the districts are allocated and I was just curious if that was what that number represented.
So that number would be divided by seven?
I agree, all decide, sir.
So basically where we are at now, as far as the results, I mean, eight thousand dollars in the plus, that's just a thousand dollars extra per district from what we got from six, in which I think we voiced concerns that it was sort of insufficient for what we have to do with that money, that we were more or less entertaining the thoughts of a bigger cut of the pie for the individual districts. I know that was ongoing conversation. I didn't know that we had stuck a pin in it. I know that was ongoing conversation, I didn't know that we had stuck a pin in it by these numbers that I see, and I was hoping we would revisit that part of it.
What what you see is a.
At the last meeting, you blessed the sheet that you saw, the commissioner was here, blessed that sheet, and sent staff back to talk to the cities about a way to lessen the impact on the right side, but otherwise it looked good. And that's what we proceeded on, sir.
And and then it's incumbent upon us, Commissioner Jones, to sit down again and 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 what's the word, thrash out, grandma would say, how the funds would be divided per district. This is just a lump sum here that now we have to go back as a commissioner and say, okay, are we going to use the same formula we have now, or do we change it?
So from the last sheet, and again, I focus really on the percentages more and not on the numbers at all. In fact, overall focus on the percentages is when we left here last time on the sheet that we blessed, it was thirty three percent that the county was going to get down below, and now that's jumped to thirty six percent. So it'll be it'll be what it'll be.
Again, until we figure out how to create more money, we will always disagree on how much money we have. That's why, my friend, we we need entertainment and everything else to to bring in more. I I got you.
Well.
It it's it's called business.
And the reason.
Synergy, that's the same thing that happened with with Organ Thorpe Square. When when that project came around, nothing else was on eighty four. Now you have people billing all around there, you know why? Because it created synergy.
How much how much taxes do they get though?
Ooh, across the street, none.
Over Thorpe.
I'll break all that down to you. The the out parcels, the out parcels pay everything. The 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 main portions, Mr. Chair, please explain to them that it's a staggered. Yeah. But but at the end of the day, it costs money to make money. You 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 know that. I I could have sworn you was a businessman, you you know it costs money to make money.
Yeah.
And I apologize, I'm the only one up here with with school age kids.
That's all right.
Yeah, I apologize about that. I'm I'm fighting for them, absolutely, because I'm tired, gas, four dollars a gallon. I'm tired of going to Savannah.
Five.
That's what I'm talking about, five dollars a gallon.
You go to Savannah to?
Yep. Where's the closest bowling alley?
Let me let me bring you back.
I'm 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 here, I'm I just wanted to mention the the you you were talking about the split on the sales tax. We we voted up here and and to.
Before he came, yeah.
Everybody, yeah, before you were here, that everybody would get the same amount of sales tax money. And then if somebody needed some, then we were going to offer up and help. I I had a project in my district, I needed twenty five thousand dollars. Twenty five thousand to tie one major artery to another one, where there's accidents at least twice a day. I couldn't get nobody to help me, and you know what happened? They didn't put a road in, and they're still crashing every day. So we all decided, hey, and that's what we've been able to do, is work together. I'm spending money in at Miller Park, I've spent money at Gil Park, we spent money at.
He gave me something.
Gears, I mean, that's that's what it's about. And and when we look and see that one another is not spending their own money right, then we'll just hold tight to our little bag of chips. But that's the that's the fair way to do on it.
And I understand that, and I guess the main reason I bring this up, and it goes back down to roads, dirt roads, paving roads, those that want roads paved or whatever. And y'all have already told me how much it costs to pave a dirt road or mile of dirt road. From the numbers that I got and the numbers that we've had allocated per district, it's not very much you can do as far as paving roads. Some districts are more disproportionate as far as having more dirt roads than others. I think some districts may not have any dirt roads, and I'm not don't know that. But then some have very much, much more than others. And I keep bringing it up that that's one of my biggest issues, the phone calls that I get, my dirt road, my dirt road, my dirt road. I mean, ninety percent of the issues that I face is about people wanting their dirt roads paved or something done with them. And they're saying, well, we've been asking for this ten fifteen years. So is that going to be a priority at some point that we look at these dirt roads or these people that want their dirt roads paved, or is it nothing that's that important? Or those people that live on dirt roads don't pay the same amount of taxes that everybody else does? Or what do I tell my constituents when they come asking me about paving roads? And I say, well, if we don't have the money, well, y'all going to collect sixty nine million dollars, why don't you have the money? So I'm just trying to learn how to answer my constituents and get the answers to the questions that they're asking me.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, ju- just a quick question. I I know a couple of years back, matter of fact, it was it was in the Georgia Trend Magazine about that county that purchased their own paving equipment, and I I I mentioned it, I think that was like five years ago. I know at ACCG this year, we saw another company. Is is that a solution? Because with all the respect, we have fifty something miles of dirt roads, correct? Or more?
Yes, right, and I think what you saw at ACCG was asphalt ripper.
Asphalt zipper.
And so basically it comes across already paved roads.
Okay, I mean, what the the only thing I'm saying is is there, because we will never have enough money in a splosh to pave. We can't allocate fifty million dollars of the splosh or T-splosh to pay the roads. So what I'm saying as a solution, what is the true solution? Because I mean, we get it, dirt roads need to be paved. But what I'm saying is, even if you all get an extra million dollars each, I mean, that's one mile. So even if you all get one mile every six years, your kids' kids' kids will still have to be paving their roads. So what I'm saying is, what's a true solution for us to come to to fix this issue?
And that's why, Chairman, I'm bringing that issue up, you know, because I know we prioritize the projects that we decide to do. And like I said, the people in my district, ninety percent of the conversation, my dirt road, dirt road, dirt road, they don't care so much about the justice center or so much about, you know, some of these other things that we prioritize, not naming individual stuff. But they said they have been having these issues in for ten fifteen years from what I'm hearing. So these same people are, when are we going to become a priority? You know, we doing these other things, putting new projects on the list, but we haven't taken care of the other issues that the constituents been complaining about ten fifteen years. But then we put new projects on their book, and we haven't taken care of the other stuff. My opinion, you know, my district, you know, people that sent me up here. And that's what I hear ninety percent of the time. I had a phone call last night, lady, I heard that you are the road department manager, say you are the man to contact about getting my road paved. When are we going to get that road paved? I said, ma'am, this is the first I've heard about it. I guess you got to get in line. That's what all I hear.
Do do we have a list of dirt roads? Because I mean, I I hear it, and I'm I'm not I'm not disagreeing with it. But but do we have like a list of dirt roads that prioritize that need to be?
Trent Trent did that years ago.
Right, okay, cool. So 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 what so what I'm saying is, what what is the solution? Because.
Funding.
Priority.
We have the list.
And 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 I get it, and I'm I'm glad we said that. Because a couple of years ago, we we tried a a regional T-splosh.
There's money there.
We 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 passed a region, well, we passed it in Liberty County, but other it failed in other communities. Then the state legislation came back and said, hey, if you all want to do an individual T-splosh, you you all could do that. And we passed that. And T-splosh stands for transportation. So and and we're we're looking at allocating, how how much money off of that one?
Um, fifty two million.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can use from T-splosh to help with some projects in your district.
And and and.
And I think all of us know we have that at a.
Right, so 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 what I'm saying is also if.
We haven't always had that, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I understand, you know, like I said, I'm just making sure that the people that I represent know that I'm taking care of their issues, I'm bringing it to the forefront, I'm addressing it with us so that we'll know that we have an issue in my district or the residents are wanting more priority put on something that's affecting their quality of life versus, you know, legacy building and et cetera and feeling wishless. You know, why not let's take care of the low hanging fruit that we got before we move further with newer projects?
So 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 what what I'm saying is, is there, can we do like a feasibility study to see if it's cost efficient for us to to buy our own equipment and hire some people to do it?
Commissioner Fraser, right now, you wouldn't find crews to do that because they're being hired up by the few private companies that are out there. And then you run into the problem that costs you so much too of obtaining materials. Because right now, they're apportioning granite out to those standard companies that have done the work for twenty plus years. They're not selling any granite in, you know, tarly. It it would be impossible to stand up a paving crew for Liberty County. Impossible before, but definitely impossible in the economic situation.
Something has to be possible, I mean.
That would be a big cost.
That would be.
You couldn't find the people to work the machines.
EMS.
And 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 I get it, so let's cross that off the list. So 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 what's next? I'm I'm serious.
We will always.
Just money in T-splosh to help with projects, if you get them together, Commissioner. I think if you get some.
And we will always have always have some dirt roads in the county. I I think I told you all from the ACCG in Savannah, he's sitting right over here at table with Mr. Moslin. His commissioner spoke up, their county has over a hundred miles of dirt roads, you know. So so based on funding and 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 but, Mr. Commissioner Jones, I applaud you, speak up for your district. So you can go back and tell them, you did bring it to our attention, no doubt about that, you did your you did your part. But the issue is still going to wind down to funding, but Commissioner Walden makes a very good point. Identify, you know, prioritize now, but you identify a road and ask us to help you, and we'll help you as best we can. Beyond that, then we can revisit, if the commission desires, how we divide the funds. You know, if commission wants to do that, I have no issue with doing that. We did make some changes in the T-splosh, did I remember that correctly? We gave a couple of districts a little more with with T-splosh, I mean, we did do that.
We'd be glad to help you, Commissioner Jones. I, Mr. Gillard, he 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 come grab me and we went, I mean, the very first thing he did was pave Spencer Gordon Road. Back then, it was Castle's Road, but he paved it and then gave it to Mary.
Now you got it.
And I'm gonna I'm gonna get the stats on.
But but, Mr. Chairman, I I thank, we we kind of came to this point at the last time we talked about this. But we we I think we kind of wind it up and saying that, you know, you got X amount of dollars and everybody, one hand washes the other, everybody try to help the other commissioners. I I think all of us here have reached out, maybe not on a road project, because that wasn't what we were talking about. But but we did, everybody did pitch in to do something somewhere, okay? So let's say if if all the money was, if it was just divided into two districts, it would still take, you know, the consensus of the board to go forward with that. Now, I I think at the last meeting, I I I think I sent the email, it might have been the meeting before that, and I said, hey, I know roads are an issue, and if y'all could just give me your top road. You know, because for the first time since I've been up here, I don't have any area that's unincorporated Liberty County. I I got parts of three cities, Waltherville, which has their own money, Allenhurst, which has their own money, and Hinesville. Now, I was Homestown before the the lines changed. So I said, you know, if we split it evenly, the money that I had for dirt roads, which was Homestown, I'm willing to help anybody do anything, you know, and I still am. I mean, because I've done that even when I had Homestown. I've distributed money where where we needed, once people came up and they they had a project and and we all agreed it was a good project and we worked to do it. You know, we only got X amount of dollars, and if we decided right now that we want to spend it all over here with my friend, Commissioner Jones, then then we do that. But that still leaves something that that's going to go undone. So I mean, and I'm still, I don't know what, if we decide how we going to distribute the the district funds, and if all of us get the same thing, trust me, I'll help anybody as as best I can.
And, Mr. Chairman, I understand also, and thank Commissioner Gillit, because he has reached out before with this conversation that he would do all that he could to help us where he realized we need more for dirt roads. And I understand one district is not any more important than the other. You know, we all in this together, so when we split that money evenly, that's the fair way to do it. If I have some leftover to spend with, you know, District Six, District Two, District Three, yeah, that's our, you know, what we can do to help each other. And I'm not looking for no more to come to my district just because I have more dirt roads. Because just because he doesn't have any dirt roads, there's still a need for his constituents, and that's their money as well as it is my money for my constituents. So she given one district more than the other, I don't, you know, I don't look for that to happen. It's gracious to make the offer, but my big issue, I guess, is with the priorities that, you know, we spend the money on, you know. Yeah, we got this X amount of money for the unincorporated area that, but why isn't it more? You know, we saying six million eight oh seven, why isn't it twenty million? You know, I understand, yeah, it's allocated elsewhere, but that's because we've placed our priorities on these other projects other than maybe this one district or two districts that has nothing but dirt roads that's an issue. So it's just something food for thought, you know, I know we can't, like Commissioner Chairman said, we'll have dirt roads from now on, but I would like to see it more of a priority, mainly because I guess it affects my district more than maybe some others. We all in this together, so I'm not looking for no more than any other district. But I just feel that we could prioritize dirt roads more. We even talked about taking over the private roads because our vital services have to use these roads, the EMS, Sheriff Department, you know, going up and down these dirt roads, tearing up vehicles, you know, getting bogged down and stuff. So there's a need for good conditioned dirt roads. Because it's not only for those residents, you know, the fire truck may have to go down them, the EMS might have to go down them, and if they can't get to these residents, house burning down because the road is all beat up and potholes in it, then we failed our constituents. So I just want to bring it up, let everyone know that it is an issue in District Four if it's not in any other district. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did have another question. Joey, this this list here from Justice Center Debt Service, which, you know, that goes away with this after this round in twenty thirty, from Justice Center Debt Service to Program Management. This this list is compiled from, you know, that 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 we put together or for the stakeholders put together? Actually, you know, if you remember, it's an initial list that that we brought to the board first before we ever went to the stakeholder.
Right.
Okay. So the commission looked at those proposed projects. And then then we went and met.
And we took it to them.
Right.
Okay. And they didn't kick on it, did they?
Well, and and we may have had an answer to this before, but the program management, what 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 is that's two point seven? That's money that actually comes back to the county into your budget for operating all these programs. For into the into the into the finance budget? Well, into the general.
Our general fund.
Into the general fund? Yes, sir, so, you know, in the current tax, it actually is shown as a as a revenue in on your current budget from sales tax six. So it helps to alleviate the need to raise additional revenue from other sources.
Yeah. It's income.
Joey. Mr. Chair.
Make sure you're done.
Well, no, I I was I was just saying, I was just looking, now, you know, we got. Well, no, I, I was, I was just saying, I, I was just looking, um, now, you know, we got percentages and, you know, we could, sixty-nine is the, sixty-nine million i- is the, the projection. And we could play with the percentages to put more money, you know, just about anywhere.
Yeah. And we hoping we will collect more, but.
Right, right. But, 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 you know, let's go with the sixty-nine. And if, um, if there was, um, less of a percentages and, and we move those up to put more money i- into roads. I, I don't know, um, how much more would we need, you know? So maybe if, if, if we knew, um, say Commissioner Jones, um, what, what, what you wanted to do from this round and we had a, an estimate, you know, can we move something to give you that, that amount of money? You, 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 you see what I'm saying? Now, now that, that would take, uh, money away from, from some of this other stuff, but at least, you know, um, I, I, I know you got a lot of roads. I know Commissioner Stevens has a lot of dirt roads. Commissioners Thrift would be, um, the, the next, um, commissioner, um, that, that would probably have a lot. And if it was, you know, maybe if, um, if y'all had like two out of the ten, or in your case, Commissioner Jones, the ten roads, your top two, what would it take to pave those top two? And then maybe we could work toward doing something like that. Other than that, we will always just get, um, a few dollars to do little of nothing. And then when this round ends, we still got the same things and the same concerns, but at least if, if we can.
But you're right, but don't forget we got T-splats.
Yep. I've been adding my nap over here.
And, and Mr. Jones, um, of course, you, in your area down there where, where you're at, you cover from railroad track all the way to, you go to Sunbury now? Yeah. And you've got, you will have people that you will find this dirt road, there'd be one person on it says, I want it paved. And everybody else says, no. But, um, I mean, I've got one.
Always been that way.
Just the old Heinz, the old Heinz Road. I just inherited it. It goes all the way into the reservation. It's nearly two and a half miles or nothing, a straight dirt road. But the, the thing is, why do you wanna pave it right now? Because when they cutting timber on Fort Stewart, they're tearing it up. When they leave out, they're gonna tear it up. And that's gonna be our road. That's the same thing into the Trail subdivision. Commissioner Gillard and I went in there. And that, when I guess it was, um, that's yours, your area too. Or is that in?
Trails.
Trails is yours, isn't it?
Trails is mine.
And that road was fixed. And then when they cut a hundred acres of timber, they brought it out right there. And they tore the road up. Well.
It was already in bad shape now.
Yeah. Oh, well, I know it was in bad shape, but the, the thing is, that's one thing you really got to look at. You've got to look at also the fact that, right now, you wanted to, you wanna do something and I understand that. You gotta go pick that one road that you could do, uh, whether it's, you know, a quarter of a mile long that's got five or six houses on it. And make sure the right of ways there and get it. But that's one thing that I've seen that we just didn't until when, Joey. Sometime back in, I guess, ninety-six, we started getting, making the right of ways wide enough that you could go under and pave them. I mean, Tyson Road right now, Trent's group was in there looking at the water. There's not enough right of way in there. So you got a bunch of issues that's out there, but I would say, let's, uh, I mean, it can be three, four of us or whatever, we can all meet down there and look and see what you got. And, I mean, you, you don't learn it overnight, I can tell you, you, you know, but I'll be glad to, to work with you on it. And I know Commissioner Stevens, he's, he's still paving dirt roads, I think. He said he's still paving them, but now I don't know. Did you see any down there, Gary, when we was there the last time?
I didn't see him. I don't know. On the way it was.
And I heard what Commissioner Gillit say, which was, oh, how much? I mean, a good rule of thumb is, what, this splash six, splash seven, we looking at it, what, six years, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. If, if you have an intergovernmental contract with the city, otherwise it's five.
We're not talking about T-splats, we're talking about regular splash. Each commissioner with dirt roads, regardless of who it is, should at least be able to pave two to two and a half miles of dirt roads out of each splash.
Out of each splats or T-splats or connected?
Splash, not T-splats.
I mean.
Not T-splats, now, huh?
I'm, I'm, I'm just getting clarification. So, 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 so you, you want three million for, for each commissioner who has a dirt road on splats? And then what, at least a million dollars on, on, on T-splats? So four million dollars?
That's right. Because at least eventually you would cut them down. Now, Mr. Brown, where you got the Justice Center, when that's paid off, we don't know who's gonna be around. Do you see as of right now where this money could be applied to roads?
Yes, sir. It could be, I mean, the beauty of it, it could be applied to anything that's on the ballot. So absolutely.
I'm talking about once it's paid off?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that's totally, totally up to y'all.
So, so two point, two point five miles of road, you're looking at about, maybe by that time, probably about two point eight, two point nine million.
Yeah.
Who knows?
To do that amount of roads. Now, that's not counting resurfacing, just like the Bill Carter Road.
That's right.
I'm out of money, but the road, each time it rains, Clinton has to go back and go get a truckload of, uh, asphalt, put in the holes. And it's a main road almost now. So at least two, two point five miles of road out of each, each splash for commissioners that has roads.
That'd be about three million.
You, you see, for, for every commissioner that has dirt roads?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, now, if you, if you're just talking about dirt road and not the total number of dirt roads. I mean, I, I said that, I, I didn't have any unincorporated, but it's in my.
But you got resurfaced.
Well, but in my part of Heinzville.
You got resurfaced roads.
But I got dirt roads over there too.
Okay, same thing. Same thing applies for all.
That nobody lives on, but, but they're still dirt.
Well, and like I say, if they wanted paved, then that, that would be that commissioner's decision.
Right, but, but I, I don't think that for the one or two dirt roads that, that I have in the city of Heinzville that may total less than a half a mile. I don't think I should get the, whatever you were saying, four million dollars.
And, and, and that's just a figure, that's just something coming from me who has dirt roads. And that's just me, you know, just throwing it out there. But we all can sit down and look at it again.
You know, I was setting him a Chevy and then that we could, we could move on. I, I don't know, um, guess I don't know how I did it, but I know I, I helped fund a sidewalk project from Glen Bryant Road clean through my and Connie's district on Shaw Road.
Right.
Uh, did Spencer Garland, did Turning Point, did Melvin Lane, did a drainage project, a major drainage project for the city of Heinzville from Whelborn Street down to Main Street and, uh, Jack Carter Park. And, and then tuck some money and help my friends that's on the commission. Now, and, and I'm thinking that was with the same amount of money everybody else had.
Yeah.
Well, well taken.
Okay.
Okay. Let me say this to Commissioner Jones, too.
I mean, when, and, and I'll just, I'll be finished after this. When Commissioner Stevens, uh, not Stevens, Frazier first got on, he and I rode around and we went straight up the street from where he lived and did a drainage project right there, right then and there with the money that he had. I mean, you know, so, I mean, you got it, you, 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 um, you just get you a project and, and, and you move with it. Or you can set back and say, well, um, I ain't got enough money, uh, to, to do it. Well, if you don't, and that's what you want, then you come back to your friends on the commission and some kind of way we, we help get it. I mean, I, my offer still stands from a month ago. If y'all got something that you wanna do, I, I'll work with you to try to help, help you with, with what I got. And that's for all of us up here. And, and, and we have done that. We have done that time and time again. You just, um, and I think, I said that then and I'll say it again for the, hopefully the last time. There's been a lot of sales tax money and projects on the other side of the railroad track, a whole lot of them.
And L-Meg as well.
That's been put there, a whole lot of them. And then somebody hammering nails down there right now. I was down that way today. It wasn't hammering nails, but it's a bunch of construction going on at, um, Miller Park. We had Gil Park. I mean, now, these are not dirt roads, but, but for whatever reason, we, the roads are still there, but we decided that let's do this instead. And when you do that instead, the road is still dirt.
The road's still dirt, but like I said, all of that's county project.
Right.
Regardless of where it's at in the county, it's still county project.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, we have to be creative some kind of way.
Yep, you do. Yeah, I'mma let you, I'mma close it out then if you're gonna.
Okay. All right, ready?
Oh, yeah.
No, what I wanted to say.
I, I, I appreciate it, uh, uh, Mr. Chair and my fellow commissioners. Uh, this is, this is the, the second, uh, opportunity I've, I've had since being on a commission to, to work on, on, on projects. I, I remember, uh, the first time when it failed. And then we had to be without, uh, splats for an entire year. It wa- it was very difficult for, for not just us as, as a commission, but the other municipalities as well. Uh, then we put it back up and, uh, we decided then that we were gonna pay a little bit more of the debt service hall, uh, which, uh, some of us agreed with that and some of us didn't. But at the end of the day, we, we moved for it in the past. Even then, we had discussions about having some, some type of event center, family entertainment center here in Liberty County, uh, to help with quality of life. And in my opinion, everything on this, on this list helps improve the quality of life from the, from the public safety standpoint to, to, uh, the infrastructure standpoint, which I'm, I've always supported as well. Uh, and even some of the other buildings that are, are out of date that's under, under the county. But what I can say as a commissioner, also as a citizen of Liberty County, and also as a parent, that the quality of life for my generation isn't just dirt roads and it's not just sidewalks, which all that is important. And, and the point that I'm making, I think we could do all of it. But also, we also have to, we, we're sitting here complaining about we're not having enough money when we're literally allowing money to leave outside of Liberty County. And just real quick, I, I just wanna run some numbers by you all real quick. Bullet County, twenty-two point eight percent. Lone County, forty-three point eight four percent. Bryan County, forty-five point nine four percent. Camden County, thirteen point nine percent. FM County, thirty-four point three percent. Chatham County, nine point one percent. Liberty County, one point eight four. You know those numbers I'm, I'm giving out? That's census. That's the increase in population with all these counties around us. And that's showing something. People are moving. And I'm not gonna disagree and say people aren't moving to Liberty County. But people are, we, we could say that, but numbers don't lie. People are moving Richmond Hill, Bryan County, Bullet County, who has a water park that they created under their sales tax. That's a splash project, by the way. We, I think we probably all should go take a visit to that. That's a sales tax project, Splash in the Borough. Clayton County just did one as well. They just opened up under the sales tax. And guess who else have one? The Cap County. So the only thing I'm saying is, all these projects are important. But we need to make sure that we do focus on the quality of life and expanding some type of family entertainment center in Liberty County because they're going somewhere. I go somewhere every weekend because if, if, if I wanna take my kids laser tag, where do I have to go? Pooler. Which twenty years ago, you didn't even know where Pooler, Georgia was. Who, who went to Pooler twenty years ago? Exactly. Now, who goes to Pooler now? Everyone. You know why? Follow your line. Absolutely. So for us to not focus on that as well, I, 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 I wanna, I wanna see our, our population increase instead of staying where it's at. And I understand people are moving here, but those numbers are saying the same amount of people that's moving here, somebody's leaving. So let's focus on the entire quality of life from infrastructure to education, economic development, and also more family entertainment. That's the only thing I'm asking. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've been saying that for ten years, I think.
Commissioner Jones, I want something you said. When people are calling, of course, you have not, you knew the deposition, we realize that. There's no way so you can answer for those requests that are ten years old, fifteen years old. You know, there's no way you can answer for that. Even at that time, the county was certainly not nearly, um, as well financed as the way it is now. There was no splash. You know, how old is splash, Joey? But my point is, even the splash now, proceeds are much more than they would have been fifteen years ago where, where people were, uh, effectively, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Walden, you all were paving, do, a little bit of paving you were doing. You're doing a general fund whenever you could do it, am I right?
Well, we had money and then the state would, at that particular time, they would buy the right of way. But they required us to have eighty foot, didn't they, Joey? So, you know, they were saying, this is what we're gonna contribute, eighty foot. Well, the money that they gave you, you were still, you had the eighty foot right of way, but you still couldn't afford to pave the road. So that's why you've got a lot of streets out here. The other thing was zoning and some of your subdivision regulations. They didn't have to have those streets paved. And, and now we've got something in place, uh, some meat that says, if you're gonna do it, then this is what you gotta come up with, a road that's gotta have, not a clay base, it's gotta have a aggregate. It's gotta be so many inches thick, you've got to have so much drainage, retention ponds and things like that. And, uh, yeah, I mean, I know, I've been down there with Pat and seen the places. I mean, we talked about Phillipsville Road. Well, Phillipsville Road has flooded since I've been thirteen years old going down there to hunt. But I just, I know that you can pave that road, but whatever's uphill coming through from the Luke Road is gonna come across it. So, you know, that's things you've really got to, to, um, assess, um, and look at. And you're right, Mr. Chairman, it was, uh, back then.
A little different.
You could pave a road five hundred thousand dollars, but getting five hundred thousand dollars was a, was a big issue.
We in much better shape now. Um, and we won't get there overnight, no doubt about it. And, and I, I know some of your roads lacking all the districts, uh, uh, or in very rural areas where some people aren't even asking for paving roads, you know, but, but kinda like Commissioner Gillis said, for those who, those that you prioritize, just bring those forward. And then let's, let's collaborate together and try to, try to get those done. Can't get them all, but we do what we can, do what we can. I think that's the best method that we have right now available to us. Uh, once again, we do have T-splats, uh, that's gonna help us out. We didn't have that before. So.
Still get, eh, some L-Meg.
Forget L-Meg money, yeah, yeah. T-splats, it's prioritized and, you know. But for your constituents, it's gonna be an education. A fifteen year old request, at that time, it was a whole different world when it came to how those kind of things were done.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your input. Um, and I was gonna come around to that. Most of it, I guess, is education, you know, where the constituents know, okay, ain't but so money, much money in the pot. They have, uh, vital stuff that we must do, things that we must fund. And I guess, uh, certain projects are on the back burner and we have to spend what's left. And I tried to explain it as such, you know, um, if the money's not there, we can't do it. And, uh, like I said, a lot of them saying, well, the priorities, cause I hear things about, well, y'all spend it on this, spend it on that, spend it on this bill, we're doing what we think is best for the county. So it's not that we're wasting money, the priorities are. So it's not that we're wasting money, the priority is, uh, what we agreed upon to move the county forward and some things will come last or do without. So I'm trying to educate along the lines and also making sure that their voices and concerns are heard. Um, I know we can't wave a magic wand and pave all my dirt roads overnight or maybe not even in the six years of this, hopefully next spillage that we, uh, pass or get passed. But, um, I'm communicating with them and educating them at the same time, but, uh, at least they know that their concerns are being heard.
Exactly. Please do so, please. And, and I look at this list, even the, uh, the Justice Center is gonna rotate often this round. Uh, and we hope nothing else comes up, you know, so we can devote those, those funds to road paving. But at that time, we don't know, whoever's sitting here, they may have to deal with whatever that comes up, you know?
Can we take the, the portion of sales tax and just for food for thought, um, and I've, I've just made a trip the other day and I was watching Contractor that got six dirt roads. He, they bid six dirt roads for him to pave. And what he did was, he went in there and he graded them, put the base down, and he's paving them. Now, all six of them, which is a pretty good sum of money, it's gonna run probably close to ten million dollars. But if you could go in that, you know, we're doing one at a time a lot. Uh, if we could identify six roads, maybe in the close proximity and then have the money i- in an account at the bank to where we can, I mean, you know, we may not have six million, we may have to wait to do that. Uh, I, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I think that would be an opportunity there to try to, to, um.
Oh, being innovative.
Well, I mean, I understand what Commissioner Jones is saying.
A revenue generating project to, to generate more money. That's, that's being innovative.
Alright.
I, I don't, that's, that's being innovative.
I think you talking about on the.
In any way, in any way.
Right, but you've got a, you've got a recreation board, if they thought there was some idea, they would already come up with it.
That, that's, that's not necessarily true because, cuz, I mean, you, 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 you can look at it plenty ways. I mean, you know, a lot of people thought Amazon was, was crazy whenever they was selling books online and then they spread out and started selling bikes and now he's the richest guy in the world. That's being innovative.
Yeah. But.
Right.
Thank you, but what he.
I mean, it worked in Statesboro.
But what he's talking about.
Working in Clayton County, he's working in the Cap County.
To the road paving things.
I, I get it, but still, what I'm saying is.
Yeah.
Let's try to, let's, let's talk about creating more money.
Yes, sir.
That's the only thing I'm saying.
And I have a hundred people that come tells me that's what they want.
Well, well, check my Facebook. All you have to do is go to my Facebook. I, I have, I have fifteen hundred people that's saying that, that it needs to be done, ever since twenty fifteen. I, I, I sent you a screenshot of it.
I don't, I don't do Facebook.
Alright.
I sent you a screenshot.
Negative stuff on that.
Yeah.
Call to order, call to order.
I sent you a screenshot, so you can see it.
Uh, Mr. Brown, so what do you need?
So the other thing is, um, I'm attached on the back to the calendar that we've gotten it here to.
Yes, sir.
Um, as far as dates and deadlines. So right now, the intergovernmental agreement is in draft form. And once we have that, uh, by June thirteenth from the attorney, uh, we'll distribute that to the commission and to the cities. Uh, the cities, we're already on their agendas. Uh, their city, the cities will need, and all the bodies, will need to adopt the intergovernmental agreement um, in the month of July. And on July twenty-first, the commission will actually call for the election to be held. That's the absolute last date, you can do that. And then I've also put in there, uh, the official kickoff. As far as, um, promotion activities will be September thirteenth at the PTP. Early voting will start on the seventeenth and then the election's on the eighth. So it all kinda backs up from the eighth as far as legal requirements, uh, on, on this calendar.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you, Joey.
Thank you, sir. Administrative report?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, one is that Liberty County, uh, annual presentation on the PTP, um, is actually scheduled for
It's in my calendar.
June twenty-third, the stated county address there. Uh, the deadline to RSVP is on the seventeenth, so I think we've already gotten some back, but for those commissioners.
Y'all try to come.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-third.
Um, twenty-third is actually the date of the.
Web, the PTP luncheon.
PTP.
Talk about the county.
And, and the other thing, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, you had mentioned that we wanted to talk about was the possibility of, uh, uh, start participating with the NACO, uh, convention and doing some stuff there.
Commissioner Jones, uh, asked about that, so, um, so I said, let's, let's bring it back up. Uh, no, I don't think any of us have gone and, I, I've never gone. Uh, in a while.
Actually, the president is from Georgia.
Yeah.
From the Cap County.
And that's what sparked my interest, you know, well, more bodies. The, uh, president of NACO now is from Georgia and had some conversations with him and he tried to impress upon me the importance of, well, just, we're talking about the convention this year and I met, uh, one of the other commissioners that came down from Colorado to, uh, be at the convention in Savannah the other day and we spoke at length and they were trying to say the resources that we have available and networking with other commissioners, not only from Georgia, but the United States. And, you know, we could see how others do it. Just, I feel it is a learning process and me, you know, I guess being a little further behind the curve than most of us are about how things work, how things go, that I wanted to take advantage of every opportunity that I got to learn more. The more I know, the more I can do to help. So, um, I just felt that it was something that we should think about because of what it offers. Not so much just the entertainment part of going somewhere just to be somewhere, but what it actually offers and, um, give us more tools in our pouch to use to help further the county.
We are still members, right, of NACO? Okay. Alright. What we have to do is, um, what I suggest, um, and we can do it different ways, we can, you know, we can, we can ob- not obligate, what's the word? Uh, allow for one person to go, two people to go based on, you know, whether the budget allows. I'm not sure what, we hadn't done any funding for, travel for, that kind of thing.
Notice for the annual, in fact, the annual calls for this year, uh, without any, uh, flight, hotel and, and without any extras, uh, just to get there for, uh, one person, spouse potentially or whatever, is about thirty, is right at thirty-five hundred dollars.
Is it? Okay.
I think that's why we decided, I didn't even know we were still members cuz I know at one time, the membership fee was exp- expensive.
It is.
To be a member, plus, at that time, we didn't have anyone that really wanted to travel outside.
But, but doesn't our membership with NACO help us out, our membership with ACCG as well? Percentage wise?
Normally it don't, if you're Association, National or.
I think.
I think ACCG did mention something about us. We are a member of ACCG that it has some tie-in with NACO.
With our representation with NACO.
Oh, I don't know about representation. I thought you were talking about like with funding or something, but.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm not, as far as, yeah, I, I.
I might be wrong.
Right.
Let's see what the digest does and what we can work out. Just wait until that time to.
Okay.
Alright.
And, and that other, the, the annual convention this year is in July, so the drop dead date for that, so you'd be looking at really next July.
Yeah, okay.
Which would be the time, give you time to look at it, decide how many you wanna go. In fact, give us a chance to do the budget and maybe more than one go, you know?
Alright.
I, I wouldn't be able to go to, I'm going up there to that water park and, uh.
Check it out. Don't get back on track. Check it out. Alright.
Yeah.
Well, I have one question, Joey. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, I had a, a call, um, and I know that we, we normally, um, get, um, Mr. Floyd to, to run the summer lunch program, we, we're not doing that this year?
Well, now, if you remember, um, what happened starting last year, as a matter of fact, is we couldn't find a sponsor to fix it either.
Okay.
In a lot of cases, that's done, uh, by the Board of Education. What we ended up having to do last year was contact, um, Second Harvest Food Bank.
Mm-hmm.
In Seattle. And they do it based on demand.
Okay.
And so we can reach out to them again, but there's simply nobody. Coastal Georgia used to do it for us and then they just, the last year they did it two years ago, we had to really beg them to do it the last year.
Okay, so, so right, right now, we just.
There, there's no, yes, sir, there's no provider for the food.
Okay.
I remember Bob got frustrated with trying to find somebody to, to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe we might be able to go back at it, I hope, next year, once we open up the facility in.
That's true. That's true.
But I think I read that Second Harvest does two sites.
In Heinzville?
Yeah.
I mean, in Liberty County?
In Liberty County, they do just two. I forgot where they were now.
When Mr. Floyd did it, we had, it would eight, every, every, all over Heinzville.
It was all over.
About every, every government housing project and several other places, the library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even, excuse me, even, uh, Coastal Health Carolina's lady was asking for, on behalf of military children cuz they were looking for a place for, to provide them summer lunches too.
Okay.
Yeah. I remember she, there was just two places in the county, I forget now what, YMCA was one, coming back to me now, I forgot the other site, but it's real, real tight now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know my church did it, they did it at the library, they did it in Rain Tree.
Did it at my church, yeah.
North Gate, I mean, Bay Tree.
I think the Second Harvest, second site is the library, I think it's.
The library.
YMCA in the library.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, and I had another question, Joey, um, for the runoff election, which is on the twenty-first. Is there gonna be early voting for that?
There will be, I don't have the exact date, I can get, I'll shoot that to you.
Yeah, ju- just send me a text or whatever and, and I can let the guy know.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I told Rhonda we would, uh, put on the agenda to come give us an update.
Okay, we do that in the mid-month, that's alright with you.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll talk to Ms. Roberts too. And, and the other thing is appointments. So you had amended your agenda to do the Board of.
Yeah, yeah, we did that.
He just had to get his questions out of the way first.
Well, I, I would, and I was gonna send y'all my report by nine o'clock, but I don't, I don't know. I don't know if I'm gonna make it, sorry. Nine, nine-thirty.
It's been a while since I've been here this long.
June thirteenth through the seventh.
Nine-thirty, okay.
Countywide workshop, we're gonna do appointments September days, um, has Maria sent information out to us all?
Yes.
She did.
For the countywide, so everybody's.
She, she did and I'll, we can get that to you again too.
Alright, alright, hold on a minute, sir.
Board appointments, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the committee, we, we did meet, um, not in person, but, you know, uh, communicated. And we have, uh, our selections are, uh, unanimous for, for the board appointments. And, uh, the first one is the Hampel, um, Committee. And our recommendation is, uh, for Julian Jones and Marcy Hamilton. That's the recommendation of the board.
We had two positions open?
Yes, sir, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on those two names for the Hampel Advisory Board? They being in all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Let's pose, alright, they are appointed.
Next board was the CRCC and, um, unanimous, um, selection was Richard Hayes and Shirley C. Frazier.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Keep your hand down, Jeff.
We'll go ahead and make the, um.
I don't have no financial gain in that, Paul.
I would go ahead and make the comment that CRC by virtue of the state legislation may do some reorganization, but I'll know more tomorrow.
Okay.
On that, so let's not notify either one of those persons until we have that.
Yeah, with, with, you know, and if, if there's a change, just let us know and then we'll come back before the board and make that, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next one is, uh, Coastal Workforce and our, um, unanimous selection was Fred Tucker.
Uh, there's a motion for Mr. Fred Tucker for the Coastal Workforce Board, I think he served there before, hadn't he? Don't I remember that name?
I don't have my, um, applications in front of me, but, um, he, he was the only one that applied, so.
Then, Chair and Chair, the motion and the second there.
Good move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second, Fred Tucker, Coastal Workforce Board, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands, show of hands, please. Uh, Mr. Tucker is appointed.
Okay, uh, next one is the Coastal Cultural and Historic Resources, um, and, uh, it's the same, uh, just the current committee and all of them wanted to be reappointed. And that's Lynn Pace, Jeffrey Porter, LaSara Lovett, Jason Baker, Phil Odom, and Natalie Hines.
Chairman, I'd take the, as a, the whole board to be reappointed if, if nobody had a problem with it.
Okay, as the name, is there a second to that motion?
Second motion.
Motion is second that we retain the same, uh, board members for the Circle Culture. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Let's pose, alright, they are reappointed.
Next is DeFacts and, um, by unanimous decision, Brittany Carter Frazier.
Alright, somebody's gonna abstain, I said, alright, is there a motion?
Good move, Mr. Chairman.
I could.
You gotta expand it.
Second motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? One abstention for obvious reasons?
You're in trouble now.
Next is Georgia Forestry and, uh, by unanimous selection, uh, Mike Mick- Mixon.
Okay, Mr. Mike Mixon for Georgia Forestry Board, Chair and Chair, the motion, that's fair.
Good move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Seconds here, any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Thank you.
Library Board, Mr. Chairman, the, um, unanimous selection is Jack Graves.
Oh, Mr. Graves, I know him.
Yep, I know Jack.
He's all over the community. Chair and Chair, the motion.
Good move.
Second?
Second.
What's your second, we have Mr. Jack, Graves point to the Library Board. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Those are the polls, alright, Mr. Graves is appointed.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna use the acronym if I type it right, but it's M-C-U-D-A. What, what does that stand for, Joey?
Middle Coastal Unified Development Authority.
That's the one I'm talking about, that's why. Yeah, um, and our recommendation is Carmen Cole by unanimous selection.
Okay.
Good move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Alright, Mr. Carmen Cole is appointed, they're reappointed.
Public Facilities, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, unanimous selection is LaSara Lovett.
LaSara Lovett for the Public Facilities Authority, do a good job for us. Chair and Chair, the motion, that's fair.
Good move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second motion.
The committee has a motion and a second, Mrs. Lovett served on that, Facilities Authority, all in favor, show of hands, please. Alright, she's the announcement appointed.
And last, Mr. Chairman, certain not least is the Recreation Board and these are district appointments. Um, I know Dwayne Johnson is, is, um, District Five and I think Tom Circa Tana is, um, whatever district that is and Brett McCorkle. He's in two.
When Tom two?
Two. And Brett's mine.
Well, our recommendation is for, uh, Dwayne Johnson, Tom Circa Tana, and Brett McCorkle to be reappointed to the Rec Board by unanimous, um, selection.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve.
Second?
Second.
Second. Commissioners, you've heard the motion, those represent your district. Uh, no further discussion?
I, I didn't, I didn't know, I had the opportunity to, to, uh, look at my recor- Recreation, uh, representative.
You got an opportunity now.
Yeah.
You oppose? You could.
Obviously not, but, but the, the point that I'm making, I didn't know, but it's, it's fine.
That, that he was up for reappointment?
Yeah.
Okay. And we could hold off on it if you wanna, whatever you wanna do.
It's, it's fine.
All in favor?
We. Okay.
Alright.
And I'd just like to say to, um, board members on you, on, on, on your right.
Don't do it.
On, on your right, if, if.
And, and, and that's what I'm saying, I didn't wanna mess up y'all flow.
That's right, you hit the flow, didn't you?
For, for, for the ones on your right, if y'all got something that y'all need to point, just pass them on down. We'll knock them out for you tonight. Knock them out for you tonight.
Alright, that's all for the good of the autumn, I'll get you out of here before nine o'clock.
Good move.
Second?